I think I have it sorted. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the regularly scheduled meeting from yesterday for July 15th back to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the City Secretary go ahead and call the roll for this section?
Mitchell?
Here.
Hi, sir.
Here.
Brizzo? Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
All right, we have six members present. We have a quorum. Next up is approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting on July 1st, the special meeting and the regular meeting minutes for the same day, July 1st, 2025.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, second by Councilmember McKinney that we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries six to zero. All right, next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary prior to the meeting. Is there, let me call these out, sorry. First up is Paige Giordano? Giordano? Sorry.
Good evening, council and mayor. I am here today to urge you guys to vote no on item number 16, which is the purchase of an AI-powered surveillance tower. Kyle already has around 40 surveillance cameras around the city, around intersections and banks and things like that. In a city that has 63,000 people, we already have enough, and I think those funds could be used elsewhere. And government surveillance can be misused, especially by the companies that, if you are using Flock Safety, they have security issues themselves. Last week, they had a data breach with a bunch of UI and code was leaked, and anyone could get into that. So even, they can't even say like, oh, your data is safe. And I think this would be, I think the council needs to pause and take a look at all of the issues with Flock before making this purchase. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Amy Camp.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Amy Camp. I'm a Hayes County resident. I live in San Marcos, but I do feel that, you know, I think we all know, we travel back and forth, Kyle, Butis, San Marcos, I'm here all the time, going to the Costco. So I do think that this is an issue that affects central Texas residents in general. But tonight, I wanted to share with y'all in particular about item 16, some words that my friend and former colleague Karen Munoz Trevino had written. Karen is the Associate Counsel at Latino Justice, and she wanted to talk to y'all about, sorry, about the implications of this type of surveillance for our immigrant communities. She wrote, "I urge you to consider how your decisions locally might lead to the infringement of the rights of your citizens beyond any local actions. In cities across the country, ICE and other federal agencies are implementing this administration's mass deportation project and are often bypassing any local authority in doing so. Allowing private technologies to survey our communities makes this work easy for law enforcement agencies. Indeed, ICE has confirmed the use of data obtained from Flock cameras and enforcing this administration's brutal regime. I understand that Kyle already has a plethora of surveillance tools in place. I urge you to take seriously the risks that immigrants in Kyle currently face, given this existing infrastructure, and I encourage you to vote no on any expansion of this infrastructure." On April 1st, right here in Hayes County, 47 people, including nine minor children, were detained in a raid at a birthday party that involved several law enforcement agencies. This raid was the result of over a year of law enforcement investigating members of associations believed to be part of the Venezuelan transnational gang Train de Aragua, according to the governor's press release. Despite the governor's claims, sorry, three months have passed, and the government has provided zero evidence, you're okay, sweetie, zero evidence that any of the individuals arrested were disappeared, sorry, any of the individuals arrested were connected to any gang. Across the country, immigrants are being targeted and disappeared, including to prisons in El Salvador and now South Sudan, all before ever being given an opportunity to appear in court. The federal government, time and time again in the past six months, has shown a willingness to neglect the due process protections set out in the Constitution. Further, due to the passage of SB 8, the Hayes County Sheriff's Office will soon be required to enter into a 287G agreement, only further submitting the collaboration between the sheriff's office and ICE. Given this environment, it is incumbent on you to do everything you can at the local level to ensure Kyle's residents' constitutional rights are protected. Please vote no on item 16.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is CJ Setina.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and council. I'm also here to speak against item 16. I'm a San Marcos resident, like Amy herself. I'm always hearing Kyle either come to Costco or to the large HEB, and also here just for community events. This item is very dangerous and affinges on our individual liberties. The use of surveillance technology can be easily misused. For example, a Kansas police officer was arrested for using the Flock system to stalk his former wife. The incident highlights the potential for misuse by individuals with authorized access to the system. This ability to track vehicles really raises concern among privacy and potential for abuse and domestic violence situations. Some agencies use and target those who also participate in protests. For example, a student that was attending the University of Iowa was arrested for attending a protest. The person that was arrested was a transgender individual. This raises concern that this technology could be used to suppress and dissent free speech. Lately, there's been a lot of protests, I'm sure y'all have known, going on at the Capitol or even down south in San Marcos, and those who are traveling to the protests or from San Marcos, from Austin, could be stopped just for using their First Amendment rights. This is a likely scenario, especially in the day and age of the Trump administration, especially when young people and those people of color are targeted by this administration. Being an organizer myself professionally and voluntarily will make me second think traveling to Kyle.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Todd Robleski?
Robleski.
Robleski, sorry. Thank you, sir.
Hello, city council. I've recently become aware of a project behind my home in the Indian Paintbrush subdivision. It's the Vibe Trail. This trail is proposed to run 100% through the floodplain. And, excuse me, after the events of the Fourth of July with Camp Mystic, I think that we have seen what could go wrong building in a floodplain. I would like to say that I had extensive experience working on floodplain in a major project known as the Circuit of the Americas. I was involved with many city council meetings, working to mitigate the floodplain out there, and these were the best and the brightest. In 2015, they thought they got everything right. They did the best they could. In 2015, there were three workers that were leaving the Circuit of the Americas that got caught in the flash flood there, and one of them lost their life. Now, the proposed Vibe Trail through this floodplain is different than Councilmember Harris's, which was 52% in the floodplain. This project is proposed to be 100% in the floodplain and cross the creek in three locations. Two of those crossing locations would actually, if there was a flash flood event and someone was on that part of the trail, they would actually be trapped on the floodplain side. Now, it is a 100-year floodplain, but I can say that having lived there, the water regularly comes up into my backyard and touches right at the fringe of this 100-year floodplain. So what I'm suggesting is that because it's, the project is such a large scope, you're not just going to have to get it right in one spot, you're going to have all these multiple areas. I would say, from what I've determined, maybe 50% of the entire citywide project is in the floodplain. And so, for me, it's not a concern about property loss. We have insurance, we have ways of dealing with that. But how many lives are we willing to lose to test whether we get this right or not? So I would just like to propose, the beginning of the discussions, to reroute that section of the Vibe Trail out of the floodplain. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Our next up is Claudia Zapata.
All right, good evening, council member and mayor. My name is Claudia Zapata, and I'm here to speak in opposition to item number 16, but more broadly to raise serious public concern about the unchecked expansion of government surveillance in Kyle and to formally launch a campaign demanding greater transparency, oversight, and public consent over how surveillance technology is used in our city. Despite what some have claimed, AI-powered surveillance technology is already here in Kyle. It's not coming, it's fully operational, and it's extensive. As of today, Kyle owns 47 AI-powered surveillance cameras from Flock Safety, including 35 automatic license plate readers and 12 Live View fixed cameras. These cameras use machine learning to scan, track, map vehicle movement in real time, generating detailed histories of where people drive, how often, and when. This is algorithmic surveillance. To put this into perspective, Austin, a city of nearly 1 million people, had just 40 automatic license plate readers at its peak. Kyle, with a population of around 63,000, has 47 surveillance cameras. I would guess that most residents in this room have no idea that between Austin and San Antonio, they live in the most surveilled city in central Texas. Item 16, which proposes buying a mobile surveillance tower, fits a larger pattern of unfettered surveillance expansion. Since 2023, Kyle has quietly expanded its surveillance infrastructure through Flock using sole source exemptions, meaning no competitive bidding, no transparency, and has repeatedly used grant funding to do so. This item lacks any transparency. No vendor is named, no product description, no proposed policies for how the surveillance tower would be used, no information on how the data would be stored, shared, or deleted, and preapproval to expend funds, meaning the public wouldn't get another opportunity to weigh in. And let's be clear, it doesn't have to be Flock to be dangerous. The problem isn't just the vendor, it's the absence of enforceable protections, public consent, and real oversight. And the truth is, you cannot guarantee that this data won't be used to harm residents because there is no safe form of government surveillance. And here are some questions I sent to council that I want to read out loud because I think every resident in Kyle deserves answers to. If Flock is sold or goes bankrupt, what stops them from selling our data to the next buyer? Their own privacy policy says vehicle movement histories can be treated as corporate assets that can be bought and sold. Has Kyle secured any legal protections against that? Once the data is in Amazon Web Services cloud servers, who actually owns it? Can Kyle delete it on demand? Are third parties allowed to retain it beyond the 30-day limit? And can Amazon pay Flock to keep our data longer? And under SB 8, which mandates ICE cooperation across Texas via 287G agreements, has Kyle done any legal analysis of how this data could be requisitioned, subpoenaed, or exploited to target undocumented residents? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Tracy Scheel.
Hello, mayor, mayor pro tem, city council members. My name is Tracy. I am a resident of the city of Kyle. I stand before you tonight to let you know that the next Citizens Police Academy starts September 11th. With that, that is going to entail 10 weeks of one-week class, one weekly class for 10 weeks and lasts until November 20th. These classes will allow the public to learn everything about the police department, from animal control, dispatch, detectives, victim services, everything. Also do a ride-along, and also a outsourced day at the gun range. So I invite all the residents of the city of Kyle who are interested to go online and, you know, fill out an application and, you know, join our Citizens Police Academy. Now afterwards, they have a chance to also join our alumni association, which is an association that helps the police department in anything that they need. If they have a special project they need help with, we can help them with it. We also help with morale, such as offering snacks and everything during their shifts. We offer meals for, you know, special days like, you know, Dispatch Week, such as that. We also then help support our police testing by showing up when they do the physical, and we have heard that that helps with the recruiting because they see how much support our community has for our police department. So not only do I, you know, suggest that people, you know, do this police academy, but also join the alumni association, and then possibly also join what we call the Citizens Own Patrol, which is later with more training. And then I also want to speak out in regards to Uber 314. That was a godsend for me. When I was injured, it got me to my rehab appointments, it got me to my doctor's appointments, and it was just very helpful. And so I very much appreciate the program, so please keep the program. And then lastly, for the last seven seconds, mayor. Thank you for everything you have done for this city. We very much appreciate you, and good luck in all your future endeavors.
All right, next up Sandy Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Gonzalez, and I've been here a resident for more than 20 years. I actually like to speak out against item number 25, the consideration of an approval for a resolution adopting the site plan for the sportsplex. I think Kyle has a lot bigger issues to deal with, a lot bigger problems, especially now with the population at more than 60,000, and a sportsplex is not the answer. Three weeks ago, I had to go to the east side of Kyle for a client. I got lost because I don't live there, so I was not familiar with the road, and this was around 3:00 to 4:00 PM, and I was appalled at the volume of traffic. This is June, so school's not out, but it's getting close to, what is it, rush hour? But still, the road was packed, and it was one lane, several of the roads that I was on. And so I just don't understand why or how a sportsplex could take priority over fixing those roads on the east side. They don't affect me, I don't live there, I don't travel them barely, but this is half of the population of Kyle. And I think that before, if we want to play in the big leagues as a city, we need to fix the base part first, the foundation, and infrastructure is a huge part of that, before we move on to the bling, if you will, the sportsplex. Water, crime, I know that the crime rate is really high on the east side. I was part of the Hayes County Citizens Academy, so they talked to us about that. That needs to be fixed first. If we want to play in the big leagues, the foundation has to be set, and it has to be set well, not the little trinkety things at the top, because otherwise it's just not going to work out. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is Valerie Deo.
Good evening. I just want to say, I am presenting this behalf of my uncle Howard Green. He lives at 2041 Cypress Road. He's in an immatdom domain process that is void. The builder's rights states that in order for it to be a legal offering, it has to be a valid offer, valid appraisal, the square footage has to be accurate, and all of those things have not happened. He's never gotten one official ballot ADA compliant offer since this whole year. On July 2nd, Graham Parker of Papin Dawson is the engineering company that presented the survey, and they said to you guys, I send it to every one of you, that the first survey on February 22nd, 2024, was invalid. It was missing the information from Emmett McCoy's exchange warranty deed, adding the extra 25 feet, that's missing. It showed 75 feet. My uncle said from the very beginning, October 22nd, 2024, my survey's incorrect, correct my survey, take the errors off, I'm ready to move forward. He's yet to get a valid offer in that time. He's been having, being attacked. I asked you last week, please stop Ken Sick from going to my uncle's house, intimidating him, bothering him at a motion, doing all these things. Today, my uncle got a letter delivered by an official legal officer, he couldn't tell who it was, saying you have to sign this document. I sent it to you guys, so you have it, I haven't read it, I don't know what it says. That's wrong. You can't continue to allow this to happen. You have to have a bona fide offer, you have to have an initial presentation, that has not happened. In December, there was an offer supposed to be sent to my uncle, he never got it. He's not gotten one offer from the city of Kyle for his property, and yet you've let Ken Sick, doctor, surveys from Papin Dawson, saying that the city did the survey, presenting an offer to a blind man that he can't see, there's no stamp and seal on it, and he continues. We go to a motion to abate, he provides the same invalid, altered, fraudulent survey to get approval for an motion to abate. Once the first initial offer is there, and it's not legal, and it's not an illegal offer, you can't continue, it's void. You have to have, before you can condemn, you have to have a special commissioners' hearing that was set for May 12th, 2025. Howard is not to get, Kyle was canceled a week ago. He's missing documentation from your attorney that he's not providing because he didn't have an attorney right now. So you can't let, there's different laws, you can't go back and retaliate it. The other day, yesterday, Mr. Robert Russo said that there's active investigation going on. If there's an investigation going on, and the perpetrator, yes you did, right there said that to me, yes you did, so you couldn't talk to me. I said, put me on the agenda so I can speak about my uncle. So if this person being investigated is your acquisition team, why they actively participating, wanting to send documents to my uncle? I said, please don't, I don't want to speak to a criminal. If you can submit an invalid survey in a courtroom in San Marcos and be abated on an invalid easement, where is the law here? When are you going to put the law in place and use it? I've given you documents, you added my documents in your system, PR system, and then you added the fake surveys after that, after I spoke to you. I don't know where the integrity is, I don't know how the city of Kyle is allowing this. How do you stand by attacking a blind man that can't see? He is so upset right now, I have to go see about him. If you got the lawyer saying, whoever brought him that document, those are police money, said, you have to sign this.
Ma'am, your three minutes are up.
He cannot read it. He's stressed out of his mind. Why?
Ma'am. Ma'am, please take a seat. Ma'am, please take a seat. All right, those are all the citizen comments forms that I have. Did anyone else fill out a citizen comments form that I didn't receive or I haven't called out? Ma'am, thank you. All right, well, we're going to take up, next is Agenda item number, all right.
Good afternoon. My name is Angelita Tobias, and I am a property owner of the city of Kyle. I have two things that I want to briefly just visit on. The first one is number 25, item 25. We have spoken years about the sportplex, and we have named it different things, and we have done so many other things, and now I see that it's back again, and now it's going to be considered approval for a resolution adopting an outside plan. So it seems like people tell you no, they don't want it. One, they can't afford it, we can't afford it. How are you planning to pay for this? Especially right now, when things are so hard with the federal government, the way it's in turmoil right now? And then you're going to saddle our community with more things. The lady before us spoke about the roads. We'll always put the roads last. There's so many other things that the city of Kyle can do better and work on, but it's constantly, you can beat this sportplex horse to bits, but you change the names and you still bring it forward, you're going to shove it down the people's throat, irregardless of whether they want it or not. That's what you're doing. Secondly, the other thing that I quickly want to talk to you all about is number 16. Here again, here again. How much more do y'all want to know about the community of Kyle? We've got the finger on us all the time now, and now you want to do this again. You know, as a minority, I feel like I have to look around to see who's coming around. And now you still want to put more information out about a person, for what? We're under the light already. Why do we need to be in the front of everybody? What business? Are they going to check on all of y'all? All of y'all, what you're doing? Officer? Are y'all going to be checking on everybody? We're not going to be free. We can't even speak here without being pulled out. This is how far it's gone. The liberties and the constitution that we have is being deteriorated. Kyle doesn't have to follow up with the rest of the nation. Give us some privacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and now close citizen comments.
All right, thank you. My name is Yvonne Cale. Yvonne Flores Cale. I'm just here to speak about Agenda item number 25. I feel like we have things like water, wastewater, roads, and existing parks that the city needs to focus on. Asking the residents to pay $161 million for a sportsplex that is not needed at this time is a big ask from you guys, and I think you guys need more input from the community. And I understand people are going to see stuff that says 60%, 80%, 90% of the people who were polled gave their responses and said this. But what you lack to say is that was only like 1% of the city of Kyle population. So if you could do some more out research or connecting to the community to see what it is we really want, I have no doubt that our residents need a recreational center. They've asked for that for years. And once, when I was elected, I asked about a YMCA, and that was of no interest to the city. However, I think if you ask the residents, that they may have a different opinion. If you guys have to bring something, if you're so anxious to spend this 34 million, of which only 14 is allotted by bond, and the rest is maybe coming from the general fund, bring something that's going to benefit the residents. Our kids want to pay $2 to get in and play basketball somewhere inside. Our kids want to swim. Our kids want to play volleyball. They don't have to necessarily be part of a rec league, they don't have to be select. I spent almost $1,000 on a weekend in basketball. I cannot afford that. If there was an alternative for my kid to go and play basketball, I would hop on that. It is not sustainable. The residents of Kyle can't afford that. bringing some kind of real recreational center for our youth, for the people of Kyle. It would be appreciated. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. We're going to move on now. I'm going to take up Agenda Item 16, unless there are any objections to that. All right, Agenda Item 16, consider approval of a resolution of the city council of the city of Kyle, authorizing the city and the Kyle Police Department to make application, receive and expend grant funding from the Community Development Partnership Program offered by the Lower Colorado River Authority to purchase mobile video surveillance tower system equipment to facilitate temporary security and/or targeted surveillance applications for incidents or events in an amount not to exceed $50,000, agreeing to provide applicable matching funds, designating an authorized official, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law and declaring an effective date. Chief Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor Council Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. Before I get into the PowerPoint, I'll read just a brief opening remarks that might help address some of the concerns that we heard tonight, some of the questions. I don't, I don't want to pretend that it may answer everything that was presented tonight because this was pre-prepared, but I'll, I'll start with that. So the Kyle Office of Emergency Management, which is a division of the Kyle Police Department, is respectfully seeking approval to apply for grant funding from the Lower Colorado River Authority, known as LCPRA. The proposed grant would support the purchase of a portable trailer system equipped with a telescopic pole-mounted camera system. These mobile observation towers, commonly seen in shopping center parking lots and construction sites, serve as effective tools for deterring criminal activity. Our primary intent is to deploy this system at large-scale community events, such as our annual city fair and concerts associated with those, holiday celebrations where we have large gatherings of people, and parades. The camera system would enhance public safety by enabling real-time monitoring of crowd size and activity from a command center. It would also assist in locating missing or lost children, or serve as a visible deterrent to unlawful behavior. Importantly, these cameras are not equipped with automated license plate readers, nor facial recognition software, or other invasive surveillance technologies. Their sole purpose is to provide a non-intrusive monitoring of the public spaces that I mentioned above, to support emergency preparedness and community safety. Some systems also offer optional features, such as flashing blue lights, you typically see that on the ones in shopping centers and construction areas, and in the public, and public address speakers, which could be used to make emergency announcements about weather or cancellations of events, or reschedulings, or other things, considering lost children and things that I mentioned. At this stage, no vendor has been selected, as we are still in the process of evaluating the available options. The final selection would be made contingent upon the receiving of grant funding and completing a thorough review of system capabilities, reliability, and cost effectiveness. At no time to this point have we even considered a Flock brand camera system, trailer, or anything with that particular name brand, or those services that I mentioned above that this does not include. At the end of my presentation, I'm going to show you some examples, some photographic examples of what this system would look like. But again, I'll reiterate that this is not the type of equipment that was mentioned earlier tonight, or maybe some of those concerns come to be. There are live view cameras that we would be monitoring from a command post during these large-scale community events. It could be placed in our shopping centers like we see in other communities. That would seem to be a good use of the product. Put it in the shopping centers where we have our holiday, Christmas shopping and whatnot, just simply to act as a deterrent for criminal behavior. And I'll move forward with our PowerPoint. So tonight before you, we're asking you to consider the approval of a resolution that would authorize the police department, thus that manages the Office of Emergency Management, to make an application, receive and expend the grant funding, as I mentioned earlier, from LCPRA. The grant is a $50,000 grant. It has a 20%, sorry, cash match to which the funding is in place, if it is in fact We intend to make this application in their July application process, so we're at the deadline for their grant application process for the calendar year of 2025. It will provide the essential funding to support adding an indispensable tool for our real-time crime center. It will collect, collecting real-time situational awareness, allowing us to do crowd management and stay abreast of situations that may develop in places where we've invited a large number of the public to come and enjoy our community options. Our options for you to consider would be to approve or deny the resolution so that we could move forward. And then, yeah, to accept or decline the offer for a resolution. The staff's recommendation is to approve the ability to apply for the grant and seek that funding, as mentioned above. I have before you some pictures of what this device would look like. This looks very similar to the two that we've already brought to our community to look at. As you can see, it's a pull behind, small trailer. It has a telescopic antenna. The two examples here have solar powering, so that it doesn't have to be plugged into a power or whatnot. And again, you can add those blue flashing lights to add a sense of security, and then also you could add speaker system so that you can make public announcements if you had bad weather, come into a concert or the fair, any of our community events as well. But that's what the device will look like. I'm sure there's questions as well. Stand by.
We'll start with questions before we get into statements, if that's okay. If you have questions for the chief.
Yeah. Chief, what does the process look like with this application, once it's filled out, submitted? If we're to get it, is this coming back to council for discussion to better understand process around its exact use? Because I know that you had stated before that a vendor is not necessarily, you don't have one in mind right now.
Correct. We've looked at two trailers so far. There are a plethora of folks that make exactly what you see here. We'll just try to get the best pricing with the best solar powering and the best quality of camera viewing and whatnot that we could get for the funding that we're given.
So would this come back to us, though, for any sort of discussion?
It could certainly come back if you so desire. The way it's written tonight is to give the authority to accept and then execute that grant funding, but whatever you'd like to, you know, to approve tonight in your resolution is exactly what we'll do.
Okay. And how common are these in our, you know, if you just look at our neighborhood?
These type of devices? So these type of devices have been deployed, I hate to say it, 15 years at least, in communities across the state of Texas and the country. You've probably been to shopping malls and shopping centers, and you've seen these in the parking lot. I'll tell you another version, we're not opting for that version because they're much more expensive, but you've seen a version of these that have what they call a sky tower, a box, that's also on this telescoping, scissoring lift. And you may look from the parking lot, and it's a dark tinted window type of place, and it's got police insignia all over it and cameras, and you say, oh, there's a police officer in that box in the shopping mall parking lot, and they're watching for car burglars and thieves or whatnot. So the larger, more upscale version of this is the one that has the police tower, where a police officer would physically be located and observe the parking lot or observe the large event. We're asking for a much less expensive and smaller trailer, as you see before you. It just has the cameras. We would watch those from the command post or the real-time crime center. They're extremely common. They're all over the city of Kyle now for construction sites. Some apartment complexes use them, just to have them so that they have this blue flashing light. You'll see that at night. Some of our businesses have them from time to time on their properties, when maybe they've either had burglaries or thefts or criminal activity, or they feel like they're going to have something. They'll get them third party on their own and put them on their own property. So these types of devices are very common in the public and private sector.
And chief, if this item were to pass tonight, would you be open to creating a policy around data storage and how any of the information were to be used within our community, surrounding communities?
Absolutely, we would. But I can tell you right now, it's not even our intent to record. I guess we could record those events in case somebody comes back and says that somebody stole my purse while I was at that community event, and we might have it. Our intent is not to deploy these particularly and have long-term video storage and use that down the road. It's really for that event. But I guess if we wanted to record something like a big community event and maybe have it for a day or two afterwards, we could certainly put a policy into place that would cover that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions? Customer Tobias.
Yes, sir. Okay, we just recently had the Kyle Fair, not too long ago. Did we have something similar in place? I did notice that when I was out there, there were drones flying around, monitoring just the security of it all. I was thinking that it was also helping with the traffic itself, because on Lehman Road, I was thinking that it was also being able to help with traffic flow or anything else in that area.
Absolutely, sir.
We also had a storm that was coming in that night. So was something similar already used at the Kyle Fair? And what was some of the successes that we had, or some of the positive things that we saw from that?
Yes, sir. We actually did deploy one of these as we were looking for potential vendors for this grant application to learn more about the product and what it can do and whatnot. We had an offer from one of the companies to just test some of their equipment, and it happened to be the perfect timing for our Kyle City Fair and Music Festival. So we did deploy a test unit from one of the companies, and we put it in the middle of the field. We elevated that antenna up the 20 feet or whatever it was. We activated the light so people would see it. It would give a sense of safety. And then we monitored it from our command post. We had a mobile command post on that location. So we had a person in there that was monitoring the camera, moving it about the crowd, and they were absolutely monitoring for the things that you mentioned. Number one was crowd movement. Just where's our congregation? Where might we have issues? Do we have any emergencies or urgent things? But they were also monitoring traffic and incoming from the gates and exiting. We could kind of get a sense of an estimate of how many people were there at any given moment, where were the majority of the folks located? So we need to move officers from less populated areas of the grounds over to the area where we had our larger congregations enjoying the music. And that way, they could be there if they were needed. The traffic is another thing. We could monitor the traffic on the roadways to and from and see if we had any traffic issues. I would suspect in the future, if we did, if we utilized one of these, that's going to continue to be one of the major uses, is to monitor inflow and outflow of traffic so that our traffic plans are made the best for our citizens to get in and out, and for emergency response vehicles as well.
Okay. I understand the two sides to this topic. I understand the issue of the privacy of our residents and everything that's going on in our country as it is, and the fear of that. I also see the opposite side of the positive sense where it's also not only crime preventing, but also in the event something happens. We have the technology to be able to help our law enforcement in real time, to be able to track down a specific suspect or something like that, if we had a crime that was in place. We did have a lost child. I look back at some of these stories that we see. Yesterday, we had a negative story earlier about an officer that misused that technology to his benefit, which is illegal. But I also remember the stories and hearing of how technology has helped in finding kidnapped children, especially the one, the ringtone of that young girl in Dallas that was kidnapped in a neighborhood, and they were able to find her later on. Also, whenever we have crime sprees that are going on, the flock systems in our city are able to track down those vehicles to help with those type of things. So I see both sides, but I just want to make sure by when we apply for this grant, that if it does pass through, that a policy would be in place and follow through. We would also finally select a vendor and really dissect them to the T to see what the technology they have and build something from there, like Council Mayor Pro Tim Bear et cetera. I see both sides, but I also see the side of how it could help our officers in real time in the event of a major emergency, and how, but also at the same time, I understand how residents may feel about Big Brother watching on that end. I see both sides.
We do as well. Yes, sir. I understand.
Customer Rizzo.
Yeah, thank you, chief. Thank you for the presentation. Just wanted to say, I understand the comments really today really resonated with me. I understand right now, we're living in some really tense times. Just recently, my daughter traveled, and the first thing I'm doing is looking at her ID and making sure she has a star by it, right? Because I'm really worried about it. I mean, if you're Hispanic, these are tense times. I mean, it's tough. But with that being said, I want to take a deep dive on this. I've seen these on job sites all over the, you know, Austin, all over Kyle. I understand what they're there for, deterrent. I think the biggest thing with this is making sure we're not going to that really advanced technology where we have facial recognition, everything else. I think these for an event that we're having hosting, it's great for safety. It's great for finding lost children. It's great for deterring crime. I mean, we just saw something a couple of years ago at the Juneteenth Festival just up north of us, where we had an incident there, and I think these cameras would have helped, you know, with identifying those suspects really quick. But I know, I think for the community, that would feel better if we have a policy in place that makes sure that we're outlining where we're putting these cameras, that where they're not misused. So doing a policy that says, we're going to use them in the parking lots to deter crime, people breaking into vehicles. We're going to use them at our events. I don't think what the public wants to see them everywhere and being very invasive in their private privacy. The other thing, we don't want to use them as a tool for some other agency, right? So that's important, too. So if we have a policy in place that would guarantee those things, I think people would probably feel a lot better. And making sure that it's this system here, that we don't go to a really, really upgraded system that's going to be really invasive. And look, honestly, we've got cameras everywhere. Everybody has a Ring camera. We have security cameras. There's cameras everywhere in our lives now. Everybody has a cell phone. And I understand, but I think the technology scares them, is the government getting it. And that's, I think that's what everybody's really apprehensive about. But if we have a policy in place, I think it would probably make everybody feel better. And it sounds like y'all have already got a use for these, so just to make sure that we outline that policy. The other thing I'd like to see is if there are equipment that we're using here in the city, to have a policy saying that any outside agency that wants to use our, you know, stored information or anything, they have to do a formal request. And I don't know if that's something that the PD would like to do, but I think that'd be a good policy. And look, we've got a great PD here. Kyle PD is among the finest, and I love our officers, but, you know, stored data can be used anyway. So making sure that we have a policy, that way there's a paper trail on anything that we do, would be important, if that's something we could bring back.
Absolutely, sir. And then if you give permission for us to apply for the grant, to go along with all of the council members' interests, we could certainly bring it back for your final approval. And when we do that, you would see the full scope of the equipment, the vendor that we selected, and every option that it offers and what it does not offer. And then secondly, we could bring back a policy that addresses all of these concerns that you've mentioned, because we're on the same page with you, and we understand the concerns as well. We don't want the community to fear law enforcement, and we just think this would be an added tool to help us keep our community safe. So we could absolutely do everything you've asked.
Yeah. Sometimes I feel that's what it comes down to. Because you can go to the bank, and you're on camera, and that's how it goes. You go to a school, you go check out your child, you've got to hand over your ID, and you hand them the ID, and it goes into a scanner, and then you take your child, where does that information go? Okay? Who holds on to that? But it's a school. But I think the big issue is that this has to reflect on the police department, and that's what makes people nervous, because the police are the ones that are in control of this. And I think that's where a lot of the fear comes in from people, because the law enforcement in our city is requesting this versus anybody else.
We would prefer our citizens see this at a community event and be glad that it's there and feel much safer and more protected with it there. So I agree with every bit of that. We can do that.
Yes, sir.
Chief, how would you go about establishing a policy? If we directed you to come with a data security policy related to all of our surveillance technology, what would be the process you would go through?
So it's most easier to address this one singular camera, because the city has cameras in other places and all that that are obviously recorded. So it's a much bigger discussion.
Well, how about everything that's monitored by a third party?
Yeah, we absolutely, we'll work with legal to make sure that we cover every basis and bring you back a policy. The easy one to address all the concerns tonight is very specifically attributed to this particular use of equipment and what we can and can't do with it. But we'll certainly bring back a policy that would cover everything that you want. I may break them into two, because to me, there are two different types of equipment. This is just a live view camera, or maybe short term if we want to record for that event. The other thing is something that we have up and around the city on purpose. Everybody knows the event that happened at this particular facility yesterday, and heaven forbid, something had happened yesterday, we would all want cameras to capture every piece of evidence that we would want. So that's a much bigger discussion, but we can absolutely bring back a policy that addresses this one and the other one as desired. But we'll certainly bring back a policy that would cover everything that you want. I may break them into two, because to me, there are two different types of equipment. This is just a live view camera or maybe short term if we want to record for that event. The other thing is something that we have up and around the city on purpose. Everybody knows the event that happened at this particular facility yesterday, and heaven forbid, something had happened yesterday, we would all want cameras to capture every piece of evidence that we would want. So that's a much bigger discussion, but we can absolutely bring back a policy that addresses this one and the other one as desired.
So that's kind of my point. I don't think that this particular item really is, has as many potential misuses as the actual license plate reader products that we have in the community. You know, I've expressed, and the council has expressed through the years, a sort of a reluctance, because we recognize the, I think you said 100, you know, in the last year or so, you've had, you know, 100 different, you know, stops or whatever arrests that you've been able to make, crimes you've been able to solve, some of them pretty substantial. And so the opportunity is helping, you know, keep our community safe. But conversely, you know, as has been said many times, there are unwanted uses and also the potential for data leaks and things, and the data to go away, be used in a way that really isn't why we bought those machines in the first place. We did it to keep the community safe. So I definitely want to make sure that I'm clear that, at least from my standpoint, that this tower, that this non, it's not even really necessarily recording, it's just a camera on a tower for the most part, is not nearly as powerful of a tool in generating as much data as what has been discussed in some of the citizen comments. A lot of what's being said there is very scary to me, and I think to a lot of people, to have pattern recognition, you know, kind of software, because I just know what they can do with that much data all over the city. So I guess I'm still curious as to, in terms of how you would develop the policy, if there is a, if there's a way that we can have so that we're not, because it's sort of like you're developing your own policy for something, you know, it's the same problem that Councilmember Tobias was saying, is how do we craft a policy, and maybe I'll ask Amy, that allows for, as the policy's being developed, that we are taking advantage, we're doing everything we can to make sure that the data is not being used in a way that we don't want? Because it may even be the case that we wrote something, but it didn't actually materialize in the, it didn't have the effect that we want, because the other side is so well lawyered up, you know, flock and the people behind that are writing these contracts and are helping. Like, I get worried that it will be worded in such a way that it will sound almost like what we want, but actually technically not do what we want. And I think the only way to accomplish that is, as we're drafting this policy, that we have at least some sort of external group or external person or, you know, something along those lines that helps us to make sure that we're, you know, legally, it has as much teeth as it can possibly have so that we can have that security and that there would be consequences if it was broken.
So there are a couple of different practices we follow when looking at policies. There's likely a consultant we could track down who would have some experience doing this sort of policy, if that's something that council has an appetite to do. Typically, if we're trying to do them in-house, we'll benchmark policies that other cities or other government entities have and use those and talk to our friends or colleagues that we know in other cities and say, hey, has this worked out for you? If you could rewrite it now, how would you write it? And get some ideas. So if the council wants us to hire a consultant, we're happy to look into that. If not, we can find other practices. I think a policy is something that you want to spend a lot of time thinking about and put a lot of eyes on.
To add to that, just briefly, we have a policy in place that addresses it now, so we'll use that as our starting point. We also have, in addition to the information that our attorney provided, we have the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and we also have the Texas Police Chiefs Association that provide model policies, and they guide agencies through the recognition process. And they give you a standard that kind of sets across the state or in ICP's case, across the nation. So we have some standards that we can also compare it to. Obviously, we want it to meet our local needs, but we have some other professional groups that have policies to go by and start with and get some good examples. So we'll bring those in as well. You'll see what the country's doing.
I understand your point, but it's kind of like what Councilmember Tobias was saying in terms of those outside agencies. We don't have the same trust necessarily in how they might would use the data and craft a policy that I think we all do in our own police department. So it's not a, this has nothing to do with KPD really at all. It has a lot to do more with what's happening at the state and federal level. And so I think probably the policy we would want to craft would be, is strongly opposed to some of those elements of what we're hearing as possible, so that, so I'm just, maybe the question is to the council, do you want to allow for basically staff to internally draft a policy related in particular to license plate readers and then more broadly to surveillance? Or do we want to go out and engage with a group of consultants, someone who might be more third-party and independent and helping to try to craft a policy that addresses a lot of the concerns that we're hearing tonight, and I know a lot of us agree with?
I would much prefer to utilize a third-party consulting company to look into this and to look at some of the stories from around the country and how the data has been misused so that we can get a well-rounded perspective of where the inefficiencies are with the data storage and how it's shared, how it's stored, how it's shared. And there's probably a few other things that we can look at as well. But I think that's probably the best way, in my opinion at least, and what I would prefer to do.
The biggest thing will be the requests, making sure that we have a paper trail and requests coming in, because you're, you just don't want to share something. You want to make sure what agency is asking for it? Why are they asking for it? You know, you want to have that paper trail. It's important to make sure that, this way we know we followed that policy. It's important. So look, honestly, it's scary times we're living in right now with all the data and everything out there. So making sure that we're able to trace every request is going to be really, really important.
So my thought on this, well, my comment, if this is a surveillance tool, why would we need data storage?
On this one, you don't have to. If we want, the only thing y'all brought, you brought an example to my mind tonight while I'm standing here, because in theory, this has only been just a live view camera system. But while I was describing to you some of the events where we might use this, for example, the city of Kyle Fair and Music Festival, it's a two, three-day event. We're going to be there for a few days, and maybe somebody doesn't report that their purse was stolen until a day or two after. So I could see some benefit to keep it for a couple of days, just to make sure somebody didn't report an assault or a theft or something, a burglary of their car when they got back to wherever. You made me think of a good use to record for a few days and then dispose of it, because nobody came forward with any allegations of wrongdoing, and we dispose of it. So a short-term, five-day storage, and we move it on. Prior to that, when I came up here, this is a live view camera system, and we were just asking to have a live view camera.
I think we got off of the discussion, because we actually started on this camera system, somehow we got into the license plate readers, which isn't on the agenda, so.
Well, it's tangentially related. I understand.
It's like stretching a little bit, but just making sure that we stay kind of focused.
Well, I'm not going to, because I think that is the larger, I think that is the larger point that's being made by the community, that they want to make sure that these systems, and in particular, the more robust systems that are out there, it is heavy on people's minds. And I do think that we should have a policy related generally to surveillance, but in particular to the use of data that we collect in third-party applications. And so it's clear that this one does not, but I think it's worth kicking that off. And I'll say it, I think this is for the police's best interest, too, because I think these products are actually making our community safer, and I think the testimonials around that are crystal clear. But if we aren't able to find a way to address what we're hearing back from the community and this data security issue, then it's going to come to a head, and we're going to be in a position where we're not going to want to continue to expand something that, generally speaking, is saving lives and property, you know? And so I just, I'm trying to find a way for us to set off on that path so that we can know at least that we've done what we need to do to make sure that these tools are being used the way we intend.
And that's what I'm trying to get to. We need to bring forward an agenda item, making sure that we bring it forward, address this issue. And I think we could do that at our next meeting, making sure that we bring in an agenda item, see how we can move forward on this. I'm just saying, the agenda item before us right now is more on this one tower, and we've kind of strayed from that. But this is really important to all of us, so I think an agenda item is warranted and needed for our next meeting. If council feels differently, we can move forward today. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything right, so that way later on, if there's ever a legal question, we're following the letter of the law.
Understood. There's no action item to be taken, but there can be direction with regards to how we set it up. And so I'm saying, if we give council, if we give staff direction to bring back a policy, but don't give a little bit of thought to it here, that it may not be the kind of policy that we want, we might find ourselves not achieving what we're trying to achieve. So I think that we should try to have at least some kind of third-party operator, third-party consultant that we bring in that would be truly a sort of an independent, taking both all the different factors and expert, and have them help draft something. But that's just my thought on it, Councilmember McKinney.
This, I feel like this is an important enough topic that it deserves its own agenda item, for sure. When I first read it, I wasn't entirely sure exactly, you know, what this piece of equipment is doing. Chief can attest. I reached out to him pretty early on and was like, hey, and he filled me in on what it is and what it isn't. But, you know, I've got concerns about, you know, abuse of surveillance, things like that, too. And I would very much like to see something in place. And I think a third-party probably would come with a perspective that internally we might miss. Like, there might be some things that they would point out that we wouldn't think of, just because we're thinking from a position of how we intend to use it, and somebody outside might think of a way that it would not be intended to be used. I don't know if that's clear, but I think we definitely need to come up with some kind of program that guides how we move forward.
Right. So what if we come up, what if we direct staff first to try to look into that, find out what a kind of policy we can come up with? Contact specific vendors that would be utilized for these? Gather that data as far as what they do? And are we in a hurry to be able to purchase this item? Are we on the time clock for this grant?
We're on the time clock.
I'm thinking about, to me, I'm looking at it from the safety standpoint, to when we have parades and we have events, the surveillance would be good to be able to monitor the crowd, monitor the traffic. If there's a situation that comes on, we can get to an officer, to the pinpoint directly. But I'm also listening to the residents about their big concern about the misuse of this. So should we look at developing or looking at a policy ahead of time, the type of vendors we would use, before we look at going for the grant? Or are we on the time clock to get this approved or get this going, or we might miss out on this?
We're on the time clock for your permission to apply for the grant. Once the grant is awarded, we would want to move expeditiously, but with your consent, permission, involvement to approve the grant. As we talked about earlier, we'd bring you back. The only thing we're on the time clock is to meet their July application period, and that's now. Everything else could come at a more timely, slower rate with your review and oversight.
Mayor and council, if I could make a recommendation, I think it's two things, to proceed with applying for the grant and then to bring back an action item in the future with the product and policy for how we would use this piece of equipment. And the second item would be to bring back an item in the future of outlining the process we would use, what type of vendors that are out there, how a policy would be developed and a recommendation for you, how to proceed through that process, and potentially some kind of audit or review function for those data points and systems that are out there and all the information that's stored, so you have good familiarity with how that's done, the public understands how that data is going to be used and not used. And so we could bring all that back. I do think it will take some time to do all those. I don't know exactly how long we'll look at that. It will take a little bit more time. But those are two items that are kind of distinct. One would be the grant, and then we could bring back an action item for this piece of equipment with some policy for this piece of equipment. So it's a little bit simpler and a little bit broader item for you in the future as an option for you as you consider this item tonight.
What do you think? Okay. You want this piece of equipment to come back with the vendor and so that we can see it and purchase it and a policy around that piece of it? For myself, I don't really care about either of those, because I don't, this is, this product does not have the issues.
This particular product is applicable, but I'm not supposed to bring it back.
It's applicable in a broader sense, but the real issue is.
I think more with the policy around it is what we're going to do, because we've already seen what it's doing. We've already outlined that, chief has outlined that it's not going to have the facial recognition, not going to have the license plate readers, just making sure we stay with that with the product. But I do want to see a policy where we're using it, when we're using it would be great. Because I think that's what the residents are asking for. They're afraid they're going to put, we're going to put this near their neighborhood, put it in their backyard to catch people coming out of the neighborhood, and I want to make sure, I want to assure them that that's not the wood cases.
And the policy can state when this, if this goes through as far as applying for the grant, and we actually, we may not even get it for all we know.
That's correct.
Right? We may not even, we can put in for it, but there's no guarantee that we would actually get the grant. But we can also put that in place to where, when will these items, when will this surveillance equipment will be deployed? And then we can maybe develop the policy to say, if you're going to an event, we will have these, this item, these surveillance cameras available, to where it also gives people a heads up, hey, if you go to the Kyle Fair, just be aware that you, that the system, the system will be available on that end. So that way, it also could deter crime in that end. If somebody wants to try to do something there, have mischievous behavior, maybe they may not attend that event. But it also tells people, hey, look, we're being not so much watched, but we're being monitored for security purposes and safety reasons. We can give the city, the residents, a heads up ahead of time that these would be there.
Yes, sir.
Would be against that if it goes through, like I said.
I think you've seen it in fairs where you walk in to the gate, and there's a sign there saying.
But that would be, that would be, that would be a policy that would be in place. But then again, we may not get this grant.
Correct. We could put that in there. We could put the information you just described in our policy.
So Brian, would you rather have an item coming back with regards to the broader data policy, which is the one that I want to make sure that we're setting off on the right foot? A data policy with regards to third-party vendors that are using our products like license plate readers where we pay a monthly subscription, it gets sent out to the cloud, and that piece of it? If we put an item on the next agenda, there's not going to be a policy that you have in place. And so it's a, it's an item to, for what? I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah.
And then secondarily, how long would it take for you to work together? Do you need to bring back a consultant item to develop a policy? Or can you just move forward? What kind of process on that piece?
The honest answer is I don't know how long. I don't think it'll be at the next agenda. I think it would be an opportunity for us to sit down, look at some vendors that are out there, see what a scope of services might look like, what's the cost for that, and bring you some options back with a plan and a path, some options of how you could proceed.
Okay.
But tonight, I can't tell you exactly what those options are.
You could do that part of it by the next meeting.
Yes, sir. So we would bring, I think what I would prefer to do is to bring something back to you with some options where you could then take action and proceed on one of the options that we identify for you. And that way, you have then a path forward of how that's going to play out. And it might take a couple of months, three, four months, you know, depending on what kind of process we go through to look at the policy and all the angles on it. I think there's, there is complexity there, and we need to make sure we do a good job on it and make sure we bring you back something that you're going to be happy with, the community's going to be happy with.
Just to be clear, I wasn't planning on bringing a policy mix.
Right.
Councilmember, it was just to be able to give direction, and I was worried that we're going outside the scope of the agenda item writing and making sure that we gave this as due diligence. But if there's something, if we can just give direction today, that's fine. I just didn't want to vote on something, because that would have been outside the scope of the written items.
I think it's good general direction of something you want us to bring back for a later action item that we would have. So that's, I believe that's enough discussion for us to move forward with that if the council's comfortable with that direction.
And whatever feedback we get from the policy, from the consultant. When we get back from the consultant, if we looked at the policy that you have, then my biggest thing is, is I would like to have community engagement on that.
Yes, sir.
I would want the community to get, to give us feedback or give feedback on the policy on how it would be utilized.
Absolutely. We can do that.
All right. So I can take a stab at a motion, because I'm thinking three things here is what I'm hearing. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 16 and to direct staff to, after a vendor, if the grant is received, after a vendor is selected and then the product is made available, that that item would come back for approval. And it would also come with a policy for how that particular piece of equipment would be used, and also to direct staff to bring back the formation of a broader data policy at the next meeting with various options for consultants and a path and timelines for how we might accomplish that.
The only issue I would have is next meeting, I'm not sure if the next meeting I'll have that information. We'll do our best to bring it forward quickly, but I don't know if I'll have it at the next meeting.
Why are those all one motion? The first two things you said can be one, and then the second one is completely unrelated, because it's about how we utilize the current flock cameras, not anything.
So I don't think we need a motion on that second part.
So I don't think we need a motion on that second part. We, we will bring it back when we, when we're prepared to bring it back.
Fair enough.
The motion is just on how to handle this particular.
Motion is to approve and then to have them bring it back whenever they make a selection, if they make it with a policy. All right. Motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember McKinney, is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries five to two. All right. Next up is Agenda Order per the Rules of Council. Is, are there any items that we're wanting to move around on the agenda outside of 16? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move to Reports and Presentations. Receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding possible program changes to Uber Kyle 314 program and transit study update.
Mike Trimble, Director for Transportation and Public Works. So tonight I'm here with Kayla Sharp from our Planning Department. And tonight, a couple of things we want to accomplish. One is provide an update on where we're at with the Uber program. It's been a very successful program, so we want to give you an update on that. But then also talk about some potential options for how we move forward in, in the near term with the program. And then also provide a very brief update on where the consultant is, the Goodman Corporation, and their work on the Uber study that they're doing right now. So just overview of the program. It's a voucher program established in 2020. It has subsidized Uber rides within Kyle, to and from the airport and to and from the Veterans Administration in Austin. Uber 314 works primarily within the city limits. It has 10 one-way trips per month per voucher. The rider pays the first $3.14 and then the city pays the next $10 of that ride. And then the rider pays anything additional above that, that 13, 14 amount. Airport and, and VA vouchers work pretty much the same way. There are two one-way rides per month per voucher. The rider pays 31.4% of the total cost, city pays the other 68.6%. And then the city pays the remaining $50, up to $50. So where we're at right now, as a program has expanded, is again, it's been very successful. The budget really hasn't been adjusted to account for any of the additional usage. The number of vouchers available each month has historically been increased based on that usage. So we've just been kind of keeping pace with the ridership and the demand at this point. As, as a result, the program's grown very rapidly. And then we're looking for ways on how to address that, again, just because we've just tried, been trying to meet the demand as best we can with the program. So right now, for the vouchers, for the 314, there's 2,000 vouchers that are released monthly, which equates, and again, there's 10 rides per voucher, so there's 20,000 possible rides. Airport vouchers, 1,000 vouchers are being released monthly, and then the VA has 400 vouchers that are being released, released monthly. So those, that's general, that's the guidelines right now that we're using for the program. As you can see, these are the, the monthly costs for the program. As you can just see, those kind of generally increasing over time. The blue is for last fiscal year, the 2024 fiscal year, and then the red is this current fiscal year. And again, very successful program, and we've just seen the, the ridership and the demand for vouchers just, just increasing incrementally over that time. So a little bit more about the, the current fiscal year spending. Right now, we mentioned that we have about 2,000 vouchers for the 314 program, about 1,400, almost 1,500 of those are being accepted per month. That's about, that's the usage we're looking at. Average number of trips is about 4,800, 4,875, and then the average cost per ride is about $7.49. And so that, that is the bulk of, of the, the cost and expenditures for the program right now. Airport vouchers, we're using about 597, close to 600 of the 1,000 vouchers right now. And then the average cost of that is about $31.75 that we're incurring for that total of 17,800. And then the VA vouchers, we're using about 71 of the 400 per month, so not, not quite as many of those. And then the average cost of that ride is about $34.38. And so we also have the Maruti program. The Maruti program is for wheelchair accessible rides, excuse me. And so those are handled a little bit differently. And so with the Uber program, as you know, you download the app and then you get those vouchers uploaded into your Uber app. And so with the Maruti, that's more of a phone call based, and so you can set up those rides on an appointment basis. And so again, we have about 109 trips on average and about $134 per, per ride for those as well. And so right now, we're looking at the approved budget is about $450,000, and then our spent through June is about $638,000. And again, just a lot, a lot of demand for the program, and it's great to see it being so successful. The estimated total, as we're looking at the last couple of months and finishing out the fiscal year, is about $850,000. And so we just wanted to bring this to you and give you this status. And again, what we're looking for tonight is just some direction, some discussion on kind of which way we want to go. We don't have a resolution for you tonight. What we wanted to do is just get some direction from you on which, which direction we'd want to go potentially in, in looking at the program, at least in the near term. We do have the transit study that's happening, and so we definitely want to see what recommendations come out of the, the Uber study. Those recommendations should be ready in the January, February timeframe. Until then though, what we're looking at is some recommendations on just putting some light guardrails around the program and really looking at the current usage. And so option one that you have is just capping the vouchers per month. And what we're recommending is capping at about 1,500 vouchers for the 314 program, which aligns with the current usage that we're seeing in this fiscal year. 250 for airport, which is a little bit less than what we have for that, and then 150 for VA, which again exceeds the, the usage that we're seeing on a monthly basis. You know, some other options we have is we could also look at capping spending per month. You know, just, just kind of go till the budget runs out basically each month. And then also we could look at just cap the spending for the year, which is probably one of the more, you know, kind of more impactful ways to do that. So definitely we would lean towards option one if we were going to be looking at putting any guardrails. The other option, of course, is to just continue as we are right now and then see what comes out of the Uber study and then see what recommendations we want to take a look at in that process. And so that's what we have for you tonight. And again, these are some of the costs associated with that, with these guardrails that we're talking about. For a couple of the options, we're talking about really putting it around 60,000 per month expenditures, which again closely aligns with what we're looking at right now. We were hitting near 70 this, this past month, but we've been right around 58,000 for the fiscal year. So this is really looking at just kind of, just keeping it around where we're at right now, basically, with some of, some of the options. And that, and again, our recommendation would be using option one to kind of meet that 60,000 if we're looking at potential guardrails for the program.
All right. Mike, why didn't you all consider the, you know, because what you're, the, the cap program, everything is a cap on the, on, on the, the various, you know, items here. Why, why are you choosing a cap method, which is basically saying, if you get it, you get it, and at the end of the month, then the people who are trying to get to the doctor's office don't have, they had to pay full freight as opposed to having a proposal on changing the rates, for example? Like, you know, we're obviously subsidizing quite a bit on the airport rides. These are the kinds of things I would expect that our study that, that Goodman is going through is going to be able to, you know, recommend. Because if you, if you change the rates, then it has a potential to impact demand and our budget without, you know, it being discriminatory based on who got the voucher and at the end of the month, it just, the program just shuts off.
Yeah, that's a really good question, Mayor. So that's also, and I'll just go back to the option one recommendation on the, the vouchers and the capping. So as you can see, we didn't really want to do a, a impactful cap for the 314 rides, again, because we wanted to make sure that folks had access to that. So that's why we went with 1,500, which again aligns with what we're seeing for the current usage right now. Really, the, the cap that is most impactful is for the airport rides. And again, I think just some of the logic there was that, you know, again, for the folks that really need to, you know, get, get to the clinic or get to the grocery store within Kyle, those are probably maybe the ones that really need to be using the rides maybe versus some of the folks that might be using the airport. Again, important to get to the airport, but again, we thought that, that it might be more, I guess.
So like, for example, Flugerville, their, their in-city rides are $4 is the, you know, is the amount as opposed to our $3.14. I mean, have we done any analysis on what that might be? Because if you're capping the 314 rides at exact current demand, what you're saying is the, the program has stopped from the growth. And I just don't think that that's a very strategic way to continue to grow a program that is extremely well-used and well-liked for a lot of very good reasons, direct benefit to the community for a lot, a lot of ways. So I'm just, I'll stop and let you all talk, but I just want to be clear, I do not think that the cap version is at all a, a smart way to continue to grow the program and allow it to be used widely and grow. And I want it to continue to grow because it, it is showing signs of growth, something great. Why would we want to stop it? There, there are just a lot of levers that we can pull.
If I could, Mayor, just a, it's good discussion and good comments. I think we were looking for an interim solution perhaps before we have a final study. But one of the options that we presented is we could go ahead and continue to do what we're doing, see how that spending goes for the entire fiscal year, and then we can come back with a very structured proposal about what should be the subsidy, what should be, should it be $3.14 or should it be $4 or $5 or $6 or what we should, would the airport be?
That's exactly what the Goodman Group is, is studying.
Yes, sir. And they are doing that, but what we wanted to be, to do was be sensitive to the budgeted amount. We'd had this discussion some months ago with Council about Uber and the budget amount. We are exceeding the budget amount for this line item. There is plenty of room in the general fund total budget to, to provide for these expenses. But since we'd had that discussion with Council before, we want to make sure we brought it back. So there's certainly an option that we could wait and come back with a more structured proposal and give you lots of options about what those could be and, and how those, not only the options for the different models, but then what the cost would be, projected cost. So again, it's just an interim solution.
You think that could be in the next few, few months?
Yes, sir, we do. And we, we've got a couple of slides here Mike's going to go through in a moment just to tell you kind of the status of that.
Yeah, I can give a quick update on the study. But yeah, there are different, different ways that we could take a look at this, of course. So just again, to that point, the Goodman Corporation has, is well underway for doing their data analysis and data collection for the Uber study. They've been doing field audits, they've actually been using Uber 314 and using Maruti rides and taking rides to the airport. So they're just seeing how it works, how that service works. But they're also gathering a lot of the data. So we've, you know, actually just shared in a generic way, some of our ride data show where, you know, people are riding to, destinations, cost of rides, all of that information they're gathering right now. And so they are collecting all of that information. The next phase for them is really to get out to the public and really start to engage in, in stakeholder engagement, just kind of see how folks are using it, what do they like about it, what do they not like about it? And then, and then gather all that feedback and what they'd like to do, and this is probably a good, you know, kind of segue into some of the conversation we've been having, is they do want to do some work sessions and delve into this a little bit more with Council. And so we were looking to set those up as we get into stakeholder engagement, maybe come back to you. I think they were thinking August, September timeframe. I'd recommend we get on the other side of the budget and then come back and maybe have that conversation in September. And they could talk a little bit more about the data they're collecting and also some of how those conversations are going out in the community and just bring that back to you and talk that through.
Well, one thing we could do is a, is, well, I think we have the ability to change the rates, right? Even though that wasn't an option?
Yes, yes.
So I, I would say just as a stopgap measure and then also to see how it impacts demand, maybe we increase the contribution rate on the airport rides as opposed to the 31.4%, which is a fairly large subsidy, and it's taken up a big chunk of this budget is the airport rides. We increase it to, I would say, 50%. I think to me, that's still a great public value, but it certainly would have an instant decrease on the amount of payment that we have to make. So I'd be curious to know if, if Council would be open to something along those lines. Yes. Councilmember Tobias.
Okay. I, I see a lot of that, and, and I do have, I, I did have a resident reach out to me earlier this week. I'm so glad that he did because he, he really supports the Uber program. He goes, "Any changes to reduce services, I think, would be not only harmful to the community, but I believe would raise serious equity issues as those who use it for affordable transportation would be left out." Okay? Fully supports the, the program itself. The option should be to continue to use it as is. And also what I've heard from other residents, I've heard from parents. So do we have something that we have set up for our students that use the Uber program? I, I hear it's been very successful in that sense because we have a lot of students that have after-school activities. Parents don't get home till 6 o'clock or whatever, and they're done by 5:30 or 6:00 and they need rides home. I've heard it's been very successful in that for students can be able to utilize that. I think another fear, one of the residents told me that, that we would, by capping it, that, you know, it's going to really affect the, the student. Because again, when you got volleyball season, you got basketball season going on, I mean, these practices and games, you're capped off. So how are we going, what kind of improvements do you see we can do with that as well?
Yeah, Kayla Sharp, Senior Planner. That's absolutely something we can look at with how the program is currently set up and with how Uber's policies are currently set up. Using Uber when you're under the age of 18 is actually against Uber's policies and then also against the city's policies that have been established when we created the voucher program. Uber's recently come out with teen accounts that are designed exactly for that type of use, but the vouchers don't currently apply to those rides. That's absolutely something we could look at implementing. You know, I, I'm the one answering the phone calls and the emails most of the time, as well as some other staff members that get them from time to time as well. And we see the need for, for an expansion for kind of the, the teen population, things like that. But currently, that's against.
Yes. Because I think the parents have to have the account set up for their kids, and once they hit a certain max, then it gets, especially once the season, the basketball, those seasons get going, the kids are kind of left, you know, having to carpool. So I guess raising the question, like what you're saying, Mayor, of, of raising the prices or going with the, capping it, you know, would that affect the, the, the parents or the students? Especially when they, a lot of them, when they're done with school, parents are working and they got jobs at HEB. I know one lady said that her daughter works at Target, and it's that kind of deal.
So I, two things. One is, you know, we knowingly did not increase the budget this year, even though we knew that the demand was continuing to grow. That was done intentionally after some discussions for a variety of reasons. I wanted to increase it, but it didn't seem like it was appropriate, and we knew we were going to have this moment right here where we went over budget. So it's, it's a very predictable model. So you can, you can, you can measure the growth rate very, because there's so many thousands of rides. And so, you know, so I don't think that it's quite, I, I think that we should consider the fact that we're going over budget, not as like something that is wrong with the program, but rather just we did not budget properly, properly. I mean, that's, that's accurate. But I was just suggesting that in the interim, if, if we want to do something, if, you know, staff's getting ready to come up with a new budget and they're trying to absorb a lot of costs, one, one temporary way that we could make an impact without dealing with, you know, anyone who's local, who needs rides for a variety of reasons, would be to focus on the airport vouchers. And there's only, it's two vouchers per month. Basically, it just means if you're taking a flight in a month, not if you're a daily flyer and those kind of things, but if you, you're doing that, it's a great way to save because it's so expensive to go park and inconvenient. But, but the, the discount that we give is huge. So we could consider raising it to a 50% while we're waiting for the, the program to, you know, Goodman's analysis to come out, and that would at least give us some measure of control over the amount that's being spent because essentially they have to pay more for those same vouchers. But we're not capping it. We're not saying that this service is, is going to be turned off at various points or we're going to get nine months into the year and now we're done. There's no more Uber program. That's just not the right solution at all. So the, the 50% is my kind of thought towards something we can do to help staff with a budgetary standpoint. And then we can see if that makes much of an impact, if people are using it because it's a 66% discount and that dropping it to 50 means that it's not a value add to the community anymore. I don't think that's the case. I think they will still use it. And so then we get to stretch our dollars out into more areas. And so then we get to stretch our dollars out into more areas. And then also, we're going to get all the data, all the questions that we want answered. The Goodman Group is, they're fully engaged in every little detail and nuance, which this program needs to grow with broad understanding of what we're doing, as opposed to just sort of like, you know.
As far as the territory, we've talked about reaching out to, like San Marcos, right? Because we have a lot of students that go to Texas State that could be, you helped, we could be helping them use that for transportation back and forth. Have we considered that model? I mean, there's just so much, like what the mayor's saying, there's a big demand for the, for the airport rides, correct? I'm hearing it from my end as far as the school kids, for the high school. Now I'm also hearing about, you know, us expanding out to San Marcos for those that live here in these apartments, or they live at home, but they go to Texas State and they need those rides over the weekends and so forth. And I can raise my hand on that, because I've got somebody that goes to Texas State. You know, it's that type of program. How far outreach are we looking at, since we're on the subject of the Uber?
Yeah, so again, there's a lot of things that the Goodman Corporation is looking at. So one of them is looking at, you know, destination demand, right? So where are folks wanting to ride? And then as we get out and talk to the community, we'll get a better feel for where folks want to go. Where are we not going now that folks want to go? If it's to, you know, Texas State, if it's to some other destinations that Kyle residents are looking to go to, we can gather that information, then also have that as part of whatever recommendations we bring back as we're looking at the program.
Campus, yeah. Is anybody okay with going to 50% on the airport rides? I've kind of thought about that for a while, so.
I'm definitely more in favor of sacrificing for the airport rides than I am for the people who are using it to get around town, to pick up their groceries, go to their doctors. I mean, I don't want to cap them and leave them out so that somebody go to the airport.
Well, I think if I'm hearing correctly, it's continue on with the program, complete the study. We can bring you back a resolution at the next meeting to put in the additional, or reduce the subsidy for the airport rides, so that's clear in the policy. And we can continue to monitor it. But we just wanted to make sure we brought it to you and you understood kind of what's happening with the program.
Okay.
It's an important part of our transportation system.
This is the case of a government program that worked too well.
Yes, sir.
All right, any, anyone else? Councilor Russo.
Yeah, just want to say real quick, point out, you know, it's been a successful program. It's been great. When we were looking, back many moons ago, as council, when we were looking at the programs available, we, we went out, we did a bunch of studies, formed task force. So this took a lot of thought, a lot of effort, very forward-thinking on behalf of the city and the city council. I think it was a great program. One of the things that I want to point out, that anything near, near to what we're subsidizing right now is four times more. We looked at Mini Transit as well, and that was four times the cost of what we're paying now. When you look at, when you're looking at numbers, you look at dollars, that's what we should keep in mind. The other thing is, you see the seats full. I mean, we're using the program. It works on your schedule, it's not on a set schedule. So it's got a lot of benefits to it. The ADA part is the part that I really like, having that ADA component and train professionals driving these vehicles that can perform, you know, measures to help people that are in, you know, could be in dire stress or something. So it's important as well. So I think it's a great program. Unfortunately, it's too successful, it's great. But really, when you're looking at what we're spending right now, monthly, it's nothing compared to the next option, that would be four times more. So that's important to keep in mind.
Yeah, I think, I think Buda did a study trying to get some proposals back, and there was a, there was a bus, bus proposal that was $1.7 million for a fixed route system in the city, would have provided 5% of the value of what this project is.
And that's not including the FTEs, the insurance, everything else that goes along with it.
Mike, have we had times in the past where, based on demand, that someone may have wanted to get a voucher and apply it for an in-city ride, and we had the program turned off? Has that been something we've been doing recently?
It's, it's very few and far between, but every once in a while, that has happened. I can think of maybe two times in the three years that I've been here, that that's happened. And typically, it's when we set up the vouchers, we can only set up a certain amount on our own. Anything else over that has to be added by our Uber representative. So I closely monitor every month to see, like, do we need to increase, do we not? There's been, you know, once or twice where it looks like, okay, we're getting close to the end of the month, there's, you know, 150 vouchers left, we've got three days of the month left, we should be fine. And then it's, you know, that last day or two, a bunch of people grab the vouchers at the end of the month. And there's been a couple of people that have not been able to get them, especially if it falls like on a weekend and we're not able to get our Uber rep to add them until Monday.
Okay, hopefully that'd be something we could look at as well.
I'd be okay with going 50% on the airport rides. Not wouldn't be okay with touching the daily rides or the veteran rides, so, but I really want to make sure that we're careful, we don't make any big changes until the study is, we're paying for this really big study, then we need to really wait for that study before we're making big changes to this program.
And you're saying you don't want us to give direction, you're just going to bring that back?
I think we've gotten the direction, we'll bring it back for action, or the resolution, so you can make that change at the next meeting.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? All right, we're going to move on, thank you all. Next up is Agenda Item Number Four, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding the final design for the all-wheels skate park at Greg Clark Park. Mr. Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you're going to receive the final concept presentation of the skate park at Greg Clark Park. Following tonight's discussion and presentation, the project's going to go into full design with the intent of it being under construction by late October, early November of this year, and complete around the same time next year. So we're pretty excited about that. The presenter tonight is Canton Russell, who's the Director of Design for New Line Skate Parks, and he's also a professional skater. He has overseen the design of over 300 skate parks, and we are excited to have him here with us tonight to present this to you all. So without further ado, Mr. Russell.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, City Council. Happy to be back here. I was here some time ago, engaging the community for input on this skate park. So this evening, we're just going to give you an update on where we are in the development of this skate park design, and just allow you to kind of, you know, take this all in and give some comments, or let us know if we're heading in the right direction. So previously, you saw some of these front-end slides that really just kind of identify regionally where the skate park is located. Texas does have a lot of different styles of skate parks, and now pump tracks are fairly big items that are being added as well. And we also wanted to include a slide that also identified kind of the top gold star skate parks in Texas, and how this might stack up against some of the bigger, more successful skate parks. Concrete pump tracks are fairly a newer thing still, so adding that in really does kind of set this apart from some of these other skate parks. But I think just for the experience level and the amenities we're including, I think this will definitely be among some of the top skate parks in the state of Texas. We did have some good input, and we had some meetings with the Austin Ridge Rider Group, as well as Thomas from the MX Community, on giving us some input on what this would, what it would take to kind of make this feel very accessible and truly all-wheel, to not only make the pump track feel great for biking use, but also for people with different disabilities to have access into things like the skate park and the pump track. We just met with them again recently to share the design we're sharing with you this evening, and they gave us some more good general feedback, but the consensus was we were heading in the right direction, and they're very happy with what we've come up with so far. This is the location of the skate park pump track in the Greg Clark Park. I think the space is adequate for what we're trying to accomplish here, and there's great access to the skate park and pump track and good visibility. We did look at and currently still studying and kind of designing within what we have here for infrastructure, existing conditions, looking at how this is going to be handled for grading and drainage and infrastructure, but also making sure it's integrated into the surrounding and adjacent areas of this park. We shared with you last time some preliminary sketches and showing kind of our homework of how we came up with some of these designs. You can see that we've definitely studied a variety of different kind of layouts and conditions for the more street-style plaza area, as well as the kind of bowl and pump track area, looking at how it might fit into the site, and also how people come in and engage and sort of, you know, experience this space. I think that's one of the most important things that some people forget about, is how do people feel when they come to this park? Is there a place for them to stand and catch their breath and rest? Is there a place for them to kind of stand and get out of the way? And also, these facilities are very social. So for the demographic of users who come here, it's not only a great physical outlet, but it's also great for mental health, but it's an opportunity for people to come here, do their activities that they really enjoy to do, but also to have that social opportunity as well. And it is definitely truly all-wheel, all ages and all skill levels. And this diagram is what we shared with you last time to show all the different kind of spaces and zones we're providing for these all-wheel activities, and making sure that, you know, whatever type of terrain that people are interested in, we have an offering for those different kind of desires and how they want to use the park and ride the park, and also opportunities for people to spectate and gather in areas as well, more standing room, which is very highly desired for these spaces. So for some people who may not have seen some of these more modern terrains, we did share some examples of what, you know, a street plaza looks like, based on some of these images. A little bit more flat, a little bit more open, more of a park you can skate in, has a lot of things you would see in areas that you don't necessarily want people to ride sometimes. So by bringing these more authentic-looking spaces inside a facility that is legal to ride, we tend to see, they're very well-used because of that. They don't want it to feel too predictable, and they want it to feel more challenging and open and interpretive at a place where they can really express themselves. We also have some images here showing these bowls, some of them are more open, some of them are closed. And we also have a variety of images here of different kind of pump tracks. Again, we want this, this specific facility to be very accessible to these different areas, and I think that's going to be something that's going to set it apart from a lot of skate parks that are being done. And also, the opportunity to have these amenities, covered areas and shade are really important, especially here in this area. I think looking at the different furnishings we can provide for seating and also lighting, as well as some of the other aesthetics and landscaping to make this place feel like a park first and a skate park pump track second. That approach has done very well and been an opportunity for people to take care of these spaces a lot more, rather than something that is only really used or, you know, acknowledged by a certain demographic. This truly can be a community asset by the way that we're designing it to have these other amenities in it to support the skate park and pump track elements. So this is the current layout that we've evolved since the last time we've been here to present the design. We've increased the pump track area a bit, but also maintained a closed bowl area. This is in part to how many people can really use the pump track, how it can be very accessible and fun-sized for everybody. But it also does have a zone in there that could be considered more of kind of a intermediate level flow bowl. So we're really trying to capitalize on the space, but include a lot of variety of zones within even the pump track area. The entry plaza is there, and the street plaza zone is there. And in those sketches there, it's really just us, again, studying the grading, the drainage, the integration of this facility into the space we have, to make sure that it works from an infrastructure perspective, and we're trying to make it as sustainable as possible. And we've also now started to look at some of the theming opportunities with materials and colors and textures that you might find in Kyle, and also thinking about, you know, some of the landscaping that we might want to include and what that might look like to feel more native. We want this space to feel like it belongs in Kyle, but we also want it to look exciting and special to the users who live here. So these are the first 3D renderings we created, so these are new. And I think it will showcase the space a little bit better. And you can kind of see those diagrams now come to life in perspective views here. And you can kind of start to see the colors and even the light poles and some of the shade structures and things we talked about, to again, make this place feel very special outside of just what people are using it for, for riding on their bikes, scooters, skateboards, and other wheeled activities. The diagram here really showcases more of the street plaza area and how people can flow through it, up and down. I think the thing that really works well here is we have lanes, so people can really see each other coming and going through the space, and it allows more people to ride at the same time. We also made this very accessible to ride through from an accessibility perspective, again, after we had those meetings with the Austin Ridge Riders and the MX Community. I think that we also have maintained sort of that open circular gathering zone. We've heard a lot of requests over the years to just have open, flat space for people who are just learning how to ride, and they can really observe, answer the areas of the other zones before they go into them, so they feel a little bit safer and they know how to navigate through those spaces before they're ready. We also have looked at the opportunity for signage and memorial opportunities with some of the vertical walls and elements within the space, as well as opportunities maybe in the open plaza gathering zones. And we can continue to develop that to feel very special, a little bit more of a memorial zone, and to continue to develop what that signage could be as we get through the design a little bit further. We're still actively working to develop this and evolve this a little bit further as we go. And I think that, as you see the updates periodically, you'll see this come to life a little bit more than what you see here in these renderings. But it's a first start at showing what it could be and what it could look like in a space we have available to enhance that and further push that signage and memorial opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody have any feedback?
No, no, just referencing what you're saying, I just wanted to say.
I think we have like maybe one more slide?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe a couple more slides, yeah.
Okay.
So this one is just highlighting that open area where people can come in and gather. It's great for spectators and parents or other people who might not be riding, to have a place to see where everyone's at and see what's happening in there. Again, good visibility is great for safety. And I think the lighting component will help when it gets a little bit darker to support the park hours when it, different times of the year. And this is a better view of that pump track zone, which again, is very popular right now. Concrete pump tracks are still quite rare in Texas, so having this is really going to set this park apart, as well as a sort of zones and the opportunities we're creating within the pump track, and the really kind of authentic sort of throwback pool vibe bowl we have there. And again, just really having a lot of space around the different areas for standing and staging for people to wait their turn, but also to have these separate zones, you can have more people riding at the same time by breaking out zones like this. And you probably notice, again, there's more shade structure shown here than previously. We know that's very important, and we will continue to develop those as we continue on. And then more pictures of that bowl zone there, and again, just seeing that there's plenty of room to stage and spectate and walk around it safely. And also, you can see some of those directional arrows of where people can navigate into the pump track, especially some of our friends who have disabilities and might be on the MX wheelchairs. A couple more views of the pump track. And then the current schedule, where we are currently now getting into the point where we're kind of wrapping up conceptual design and getting into more technical design, and then finishing up so we can get to construction later this year. These are kind of the next steps, where you can see some of our targets, completion of final design documents we're permitting in October, and then getting to the groundbreaking goal in November. So again, it's just to get your all feedback and any other direction from what we're sharing.
Does anybody have any feedback?
I do.
Councilor Harris.
Will this facility be appropriate for competition?
Yes, you can hold competitions here. And again, having those different zones, you could have separate competitions in each area separately. You could have a street plaza competition, you could have a bowl competition, or a pump track competition.
An age, age competition. So is, I don't see any concepts for the seating of, of an audience for that?
And this, you right here, you can see, I don't know if you can see this one right here, where you can kind of have the shaded seated areas right around that whole central circle area. So there will be a lot of seating provided. And then back in that street plaza area, we do have some more seating pop-out areas in there as well, so.
Would that be sufficient if we have competitions for visitors?
Oh, for, well, for competitions, people typically bring in temporary extra seating and other kind of events, things, yeah. Maybe even some temporary bleachers. But yeah, there's plenty of room to bring in temporary seating, but for just 365 days usage, this is very sufficient seating.
And on the lighting, we want to make sure that there's no glare on the track, as well as heavy shadows. I'm sure that the lighting design will be important for those evening users, and as well for preventing spill, spill-over of the lighting into the community, because that's pretty close to housing.
Yeah.
So it needs to be dark sky compliant.
Yeah, we've worked with other vendors quite often where the poles are at the right height, so they do tend to shine straight down, as opposed to before where they were kind of spread out. So we do a lot of studies and spill scan studies with these vendors to make sure that we're not polluting away from outside of the park. So typically, what they'll do is we'll have more poles, they have more direct down-directional lighting, so that we're not having less poles that are sort of spilling outward. So we are controlling that, and we definitely want to respect the neighborhood. So that's something we always, that's always our goal, is to have that be the standard.
Thank you.
Councilor Tobias.
Yes, thank you. I liked the renderings that you have here. One of the things that I'd like to say is thank you for the consideration of the memorial. Well, I think I've been working with Well, I think I've been working with Ryan and the other people here. We'll bring, I'll bring another item at a later time, because it's going to really reflect our youth in that sense that there's, there's something there we can recognize some people that we have lost in our community. So thank you for considering that. The other question I have is you said you had experience building these types of parks in different areas.
Mm-hmm.
The shade, I was out there a couple of weeks ago, we were doing a fundraiser at the park, it was super hot. So what would be your recommendation for shade besides the tree, especially in very hot climate like we have here? Is there any kind of concept design of type of roofing or sit-down areas where they have the shade? Is it going to be flat? Is it going to be like scattered around? Because I don't want it to be a bunch of rooftops either, but what would your suggestion be to be able to have adequate shade for the people that are there to go in there and look and, and watch the, but also not deter from the whole, the whole concept?
Yeah, I don't know, if you can, like at page 16.
Good.
There are, there's an image there of two different size kind of shade structures and awnings. We want to make sure they're somewhat architectural looking, we don't want them to look too generic, but they are definitely, I think, adequate sizing. We have a third one that currently is shown over more toward the pump track area, but we might move that over to closer to the plaza side, just because we are starting now to start, starting to look at those and doing shade studies with the 3D models we have. So we will eventually place them where they make the most sense to, you know, where is it going to provide the most shade for the most critical times of the day?
Exactly.
But right now, we're currently showing three different overhead shade structures in addition to trees that I think is typically a lot more than most skate parks have. And we did do a couple in Mueller and some other parks that seem to work really well when it gets hot, and I think this would be a great addition to look at what was worked in the past and make sure we have adequate sizing, and we're going to look at that shade study to determine where we can place them the best.
So on the roofing itself, I know that some of them are flat, so is it a big difference when you have the flat roof versus the arch? Let's say when you go to Five Mile Dam and they have that track around and you've got those seats that have the shade on them, does that make a bigger difference as far as like, or would it be angled at certain?
Yeah, we would.
You would angle it to where when the sun comes over, it reduces a lot more shade versus the side?
Yeah, really more toward angled shade structures, and that's what we have proposed here in these renderings.
Okay.
But again, those aren't necessarily final final, but that's just what we have right now as kind of our initial conceptual study.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilor Rosa.
Yeah, so the flat roofing is better because it's good, gives you more of an angle, gives you more of a coverage versus the pitch. So yeah, the pitch is not really good. Pitch is good if you're trying to keep, what do you call it, a house dry or something like that, but it's, it's not really, it takes more to do a pitch roof, more area. With a flat roof, you can cover more area and not, not have so much structure, right? So much material. Actually, the, the most heat from a structure like this is going to be from the ground. It's not going to be from the sky. So using a surface, because if you walk out in a parking lot, you feel the heat coming up off the parking lot, you feel it more resonating on you than you do from the, from the sky. So what you want to do is use materials on the base of this structure to make sure that it's heat compliant, something that's not going to be resonating heat up and at a higher rate. So it's really what I want to ask is the concept, what are we using? If we're using concrete, are we putting a coating that's heat resistant? What are we doing to minimize that heat barrier on the ground?
Yeah, we're using integral colored concrete to help handle some of that where it's not colors that are going to be bright and reflective or things are going to overly absorb the heat, so we are picking more earth tone colors to help mitigate some of that and making sure that it's going to be in the right areas of the park.
I'm a big proponent like Councilor Tibius about shading trees, things like that, but really with the, the concrete surfaces, that's going to be the biggest part of heating, so I'm glad to see that you're picking out colors that are going to really deflect a lot of that heating, the heat islands, right?
Yeah.
They're just crazy. Anytime you put down concrete, you put down pavement, you're creating a heat island. So, but the good thing is now we've got great coatings, great surfaces to help reduce that, so just making sure we're going to, it's been no expense to reduce that heat island.
Also the glare from the users, we always get a lot of feedback that natural gray concrete can be quite distracting.
Yeah.
So that's why we typically use a lot of tans and earth tones to kind of help mitigate that as well.
Councilor Harris.
The skaters get really hot.
Yes.
No matter what we try to do to help them with that. Is there any system available that is like a mist system, not on the, not on the track, but off, yeah, not on the track? I don't think any of them prefer to skate when it's raining, but that they could, you know, get it, push a button and get a mist and cool off. I really do worry about the.
It's, it's been talked about before, but it's always challenging when you start introducing water of any kind like that. We could definitely look into and explore it, but it's been a little bit challenging for all the reasons you've already mentioned, just to control it and then how to get the water there, and then just does it blow and get in places where people don't want it to? It's just a consideration we'll have to think about as the pros and cons of that, but I definitely hear you, but I will say that some of the parks we've had in the Austin and surrounding Austin areas that have had the right shade structures at the right angle, as you mentioned, not overly angled, but just slightly angled, and then having the right colors has, you know, being, just a year ago, I remember being here and you're out on the skate park and it was like 110 degrees, and it just felt like 15, 20 degrees cooler, you know, in the right area there. So I really do appreciate that those are going to be very helpful, aside from many other kind of things we might come up with on top of that. But we can definitely look into it, yeah.
Just wondering if that exists.
Yeah, we haven't done it yet. There's just been a lot of concerns. We did one in Georgetown where they were really worried about even having a splash park adjacent to it. The skaters are very fickle about water getting anywhere near them, so it's just, sometimes we hear that complaint.
Yeah, I was thinking just a mist system where you can push a button and you get like a second of.
Yeah, it just totally evaporates, yeah.
Well, so to that, to that point, two things. One is, so I see items 15 is seating, but it seems that that seating is not shaded, and if we're going to spend several million dollars on it, I don't, if there's any way to shade any seating, we should look at doing it. Like at no point should shade be an expense that we spare.
Sure.
So, you know, I would like to see at, at least the, the item 15 at the top right and the bottom left, you could have a, you know, pole structure, it doesn't have to, you know, extend out over, but, you know, even, you know, because that's where the people are the hottest, that's for the people who are actually skating and they're coming off and it's up 95 degrees, 103 degrees.
So it was determined that on this view with the pump track, I think item number 10 has a shade structure there, but in our preliminary studies, the shade doesn't really, it just doesn't really work very well there, kind of shades in the wrong direction. So we're already anticipating moving that over to number 15.
It's on the east and some stuff.
Right. So, so again, it's, we're going to put in where they make sense and put the seating where they make sense. This is all preliminary, but we hear you loud and clear, and we've heard from the users that that's a super, super high priority.
Super important, yeah. I mean, I'm not the expert, so I've just, whatever, whatever it takes.
Definitely, point well taken.
To add shading. And then the other thought was, you know, maybe not misters, but a water station where people have access, and not just like, you know, whatever, but like top of the line, good cold water station that people can go to when they're thirsty and get water freely available. I don't, is there, are there any, is that in the proposal?
That makes sense, and we'll definitely look to make sure we could try to look at that as getting that in there, but you're right, hydration is number one, yeah.
Okay.
Two facilities nearby.
Right.
Add it there.
There's water fountains at, at the bathrooms over there. I understand that. These folks have got, they're on skates and stuff, you know, I mean, if they could, if we could have something right there at the skate park for them, I think that would be a nice perk. I would use that if I was a skater all the time.
Yeah, the only question I would have is do we have a line nearby? Because we'd be ripping up a lot of pavement to get to there.
Well, that's what I'm saying now, before we start this project.
I'm talking about the road, the park road right now. We're coming from the bathrooms over, because we've got to have a line nearby, so we'd need to ask Mike if we have a line nearby, would be great.
We're coming to the pool.
Yeah.
It's on pool side.
Yeah, so, yeah, maybe coming out that way.
Councilmember, I would say that it is highlighted here on the render that we will feature a water fill station.
Okay.
That'll incorporate a bottle filler, incorporate dog bowl, and just a normal, standard.
Oh, that's great, that's awesome.
But that's what you see here, right there on the screen. I don't know anything about the supply of this and the vendors or, you know, what the quality is, but just whatever the top of the line is for the watering stations so that it produces good cold water.
Yep, it is in the scope, and again, it's highlighted on screen.
Perfect.
So you would have different faucets, I mean, you would be like a multiple trough in a way, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, you got to think about it, there's going to be a lot of kids out there.
I expect this will be very, very busy.
You will have people, you'll have people lined up just to get water, and you're going to have maybe two or three, you know, faucets on the end where they can, you have a whole robust bunch of kids get water at the same time. Because again, like we're saying, if we're going to have tournaments there.
Yes.
You know, we're going to need to have something like that.
Will this be fenced?
Uh, no, this is open, like most of parks are now, all over the states, as long as you have everything signed properly that you're entering into a wheel-friendly zone. That is kind of the standard of how you deal with liability. When you start to fence these areas, if someone jumps over and gets in there and gets in trouble, now you're actually more liable. So to have these open amenities similar to other parts of the park, it's very successful in reducing that liability.
And then the lighting will shut off at a particular time at night?
I believe it'll follow the park hours, standard hours of operation, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. So they will follow the park hours. However, from a security standpoint, we're also going to highlight security cameras on site, so there'll probably be a, maybe like one light that'll remain, but it'll be in an appropriate location.
Well, I do remember some questions being posed online about graffiti, and I understand that maybe, you know, we're worried about cameras and things of those lines, and so, you know, but you got to pick one, right? So in this case, I think graffiti is, if we're not going to fence it, certainly something that's possible, and so I would like for us to have cameras there that we record at all times, so that if somebody wants to come and do harm to this facility, even though that may be viewed by some as an invasion of privacy, that it, it's something that we should, we should definitely do, and we should put it from day one, not after the fact, after there's an incident, so.
Yeah. Yeah, usually, I mean, we even have those up during construction just to show kind of process there, but also making this very aesthetic with the colors and the landscape and amenities we're highlighting here. We really have seen people take care of those facilities a lot better than just parks that are all gray with a lot of vertical gray walls, which is a great canvas for graffiti. So I think by creating more opportunities to make this very aesthetic and pleasing and having those vertical walls dedicated to some of the signage and memorial we're talking about, it really does result in a better taking care of facility by the users themselves as well.
All right, does anyone have any objection to the cameras being there to protect the asset?
No, but you did bring up a good point. You talked, we talked about the policy for the police department usage, we never talked about policy for the city cameras.
Yeah, we have cameras all over and they're recorded.
No, but I'm talking about the policy we talked about earlier.
Oh, right.
We just talked about police cameras and the flock system, but we never talked about the city cameras, so it might be something we could add to the scope.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that, so.
I would highlight that Greg Clark currently does feature security cameras already installed, so.
They do. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item number five. Receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding the newly created Hayes County Public Health Advisory Board. Mr. Elizondo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have a presentation talking about the newly created Hayes County Public Health Advisory Board, and we're very happy to have Matthew Gonzalez here, Director of the Hayes County Health Department with us, to walk us through the creation of this new board, what the board is, the reason it exists, and then I'll let him walk you guys through it, but this is a discussion item. I believe there will be a ask for one of you to sit on this board, if I'm not, if I'm correct. That will be something that we would like you guys to discuss, but we will bring that item back for action at, at the next meeting. So the discussion of who it might be and the board itself, but we'll bring the actual resolution of appointing that person back at the next meeting. So I'll let Matthew have the floor here and walk you guys through it.
Awesome. Thank you, Jesse, and good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I almost said Judge and Commissioners. So, just to walk you through the agenda here real quick, we're going to be talking about what some of the essential public health services look like, you know, especially as we're asking you all to be on this board, it's important for you all to know what public health services we provide and what services are asked or placed onto the county through state statute. Responsibilities of the governing board, which in this case would be the county, but the role of a public health authority, the responsibilities of the health department, the current department organization, so you kind of understand the mess that you may be getting yourself into, as well as a public health advisory board organization eligibility. I know you'll have a robust agenda today, so I'll try to keep it very brief for you all. Essentially, in the public health services, what we're looking at is most things that people think of whenever it comes to infectious diseases, public health information, and then some components of laboratory services. But most recently, if you're tracking what's going on within our health department, we added behavioral health services to our scope of services in 2024, and then within this year, we also got animal welfare services for the county integrated into our department in May of this year. So those are two things that some health departments are traditionally not responsible for and were not liable for under the state statute, but are things that we have opted in to provide to our residents due to the need and demand. So the responsibilities of the governing body is just essentially they're saying that whatever powers the governing body has, so the county or the city, those are transferred to the health department, and that's how they'll operate, whether it's home-ruled under a city organization or through the county under state statute. And this is just saying that this is their power to do so. This is outlining their, the department director, which is myself, saying that is the chief administrative officer of that entity, and just kind of outlines what my responsibilities are according to the statute, which is just appointing a health authority if I'm not a medical doctor, which I'm not, so our county does have a medical doctor who is appointed as our health authority to advise and give official orders of health notices and advisories and stuff. So I'm going to go on to this. This is the public health board, so the public health board is what we are talking about tonight. The county commissioners' court can decide to create one to really receive community feedback on the needs of our constituents when it comes to their health, and the board can be, eligibility can be decided by the commissioners and what they're seeking, and for this certain board, the commissioners are seeking the participation of municipalities and the school districts. So at the moment, we are waiting on the appointment from the City of Kyle and the San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District. Other than that, we have received all full nominations, other than from the City of Neterwada and Newland, they aren't able to participate, just due to responsibilities of their councilmen, they're not able to participate. So going on to that, just again, this talks about the roles and responsibilities of the public health authority, but this again just says you need to be a physician, it has to be appointed by the commissioners' court or the city council of that respective health department, and then what it takes to have that, have that office, such as an oath of office and appointment, so forth and so forth. This again talks about the health authority, I won't go too much into that, but I just wanted to give you all some legal context for your background information there. Some more things about what rules and laws that they can enforce as the public health authority. This also impacts the health department, because these are things that we can also enforce through our department and the county power that's given to that medical authority or health authority. So I'm going to go here, this is the responsibilities of the health department. Again, we've kind of been through here, this may have been a slide that shouldn't have included, but this one is this slide that I want to include. This is just an organization chart of the department and what it now looks like with the Hayes County Public Health Advisory Board implemented. So you can see that, of course, we're still going to report to the county commissioners' court, as there's no ILA in which it would dictate otherwise. The advisory board will solely work with me as the director to then work the mission of the health department into our community, really advising us on the different divisions that we have within the health department, which is our operations support, our public health emergency preparedness and surveillance, public health clinic, our community health services, such as indigent healthcare and/or outreach and education, behavioral health services, as well as animal welfare services. Through that, you would also get some advice through our health authority and medical director. I want that, I believe that leads us to questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Matthew? Comments?
Just real quick, I want to say congratulations on your new role as director.
Thank you.
You hadn't been before us, so we want to definitely extend that. You hadn't been before us, so we want to definitely extend that. Just wanted to say, uh, really excited about this and appointing someone for council to this board, uh, I think it's important when we're looking at public health, we're looking at this as a group. That's every, that's not just the county, it's the cities, uh, that are residing in Hayes County as well, so, uh, really excited to see this, uh, board form and, uh, looking forward to what it brings forward in the future.
Christopher Tobias.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Um, so what would be the role of the ci, of one of the city council members that would be appointed to this along with all the others? What would be their main function, meetings and the overall goals? I mean, I see the goals for the authority, but as far as the executive board, what would be the main overall mission?
Yeah, that's a really great question. Um, I've had some time after attending the other city council meetings and the school board meetings, looking at what they're looking at. Um, the main functions of them is to be a, at, one, an advocate for the health department, really working with the cities and their school districts to advocate with the involvement and incorporation of the health department into some of the services and activities that they may offer, but then also to be an advisor to that. You know, it's, y'all know y'all's communities best, and so by working with us on a quarterly basis or monthly basis, um, we would be able to have, you know, frequent reports with y'all about some of the work that we're doing and relaying that information to y'all, then to have somewhere like a relationship with y'all city, um, city management that y'all do, where y'all can say, hey, I noticed this in this report, maybe, it may be STIs in a certain area, why is that happening? Is there anything that we can do, um, as a health department and/or a city that can alleviate this issue, um, using some of your either specialized knowledge or partnerships through, um, that y'all have gained in your seats and terms to really, uh, promote our services to your residents? Um, so this also, that's one, one thing that you may be helping on. Another thing is say, for instance, our policies and procedures. We have a robust amount of policies and procedures that can impact individuals, whether that's our eligibility for services when it comes to immunizations, STIs, um, our indigent healthcare. Y'all could help kind of advise what that eligibility may look like, because at the moment, it's all left up to the commissioners. And at the end of the day, it will be left up to the commissioners, but it, it will be with y'all's advice and, um, given. So think of it like a P and Z board, but for commissioners in public health.
Okay, and so when it comes with the school district, is it gonna be working with cities, I mean, the school district staff, or are you gonna be reaching out to some of the elected officials, like school board members?
Yeah, so what we've done is allowed the, uh, bodies or the entities, so the municipalities and school districts, to decide how they would like to have their entity represented. So for the school districts, they have all opted, um, besides San Marcos C I S D, because they haven't nominated someone yet, to, um, appoint a, um, employee. So for every, uh, Wimberly I S D, Dripping Springs I S D, and Hay C I S D have all nominated their director of, um, health or from similar title, you know, so oftentimes it's a nurse or counselor who's gonna be represented within this advisory board. Um, other than that, the City of San Marcos has nominated their assistant city manager, um, Lonzo Anderson, I believe is his name, and then, uh, the other cities have nominated council persons. So it's all really up to the entity how they would like them to be represented in that board.
Good, all right. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Wait, do we, we need to nominate somebody to serve?
No, they said next meeting, or they were gonna bring that back. It's what I thought.
That's what they said.
Sorry, Mayor. Um, yes, we will bring back a resolution for who you're nominating tonight, so if you will have, if you guys will discuss and decide on who would, you would like to be nominated, we'll bring back the official action for the next meeting.
Okay, so you do want us to?
We do need a name.
Oh, okay, all right.
So Matthew, what are the times for the meetings, because that'll be important for council members to know.
Yeah, so we're, um, at a minimum, we're looking at quarterly meetings according to the fiscal year of the county, so that begins in October, so ideally, a, a meeting in October and January, um, sorry, trying to go off my months here, May. Uh, and so ideally, the meetings are gonna be happening in the evening. Uh, we're going to be seeking out a facility that may be in Kyle or Buta, as that's a more central location than San Marcos. Um, so that ways all members kind of have an equidistant travel time, but again, it's gonna be held in the evening time, um, during the weekdays. Ideally, not a day that conflicts with council.
I think Kyle's got some great meeting spaces, so it might be able to be a great, great place to host.
Senior sits since, you know, pretty soon.
Does anybody want to have a, want to volunteer or have a nomination? I mean, I'd like to do it if, uh, if you guys would be okay with that. Um, as you know, I, the other board I serve on is the Mental Health Coordinating Committee. Uh, I very much enjoy that. It's been very, uh, it's been awesome to create a program from scratch with other stakeholders in our county, and this seems very similar in terms of what the experience would be like, so.
I'd like to put my name in the, the hat there for that. This is right down my alley. I think we went to the same school for our, uh, doctorates in public health. Um, it's a, it's a real opportunity to make some real changes, uh, and improvements. Matthew and I talked about this, gosh, six months ago, probably.
Yeah, it's been some time.
About starting this, this committee. It's taken a while. Um, I think that my, my doctorate in public health fits right in with that even better than, yeah, we're not being on Iowa, but Iowa's the only other board I'm on right now, so I would have time.
Matthew, I just want to be clear that there is one seat for Kyle on the board.
Correct, yes. Each, um, entity will be given one seat besides the county commissioners' court. They'll have two memberships.
Mayor, um, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Laura Lee Harris for, uh, the Hayes County Public Health Advisory Board.
Thank you.
Second, motion by Councilmember, or Mayor Proten, second by, uh, Councilmember Tobias, that we appoint Dr. Harris to the, uh, Public Health Advisory Board. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember. Yes, if we have, uh, if this vote goes through, we've got two. We've got you on mental health, and we will have you on health, so.
And we will collaborate.
That's a win for us right there. We've got two on council.
Yes.
That are part of both health departments.
We love the City of Kyle.
Christopher Rizzo.
Okay, uh, just wanna say, uh, I serve on the CAPGOC board, and on the CAPGOC board, we have a second, just in case, uh, the council member can't make it, uh, I'd like to, uh, can we appoint a second, uh, for that, and if we were gonna do that, Dr. Harris will take the appointment, if you would like to take the second, uh.
Proxy, are y'all gonna do a proxy?
I believe I have that in the draft charter. We haven't formally adopted the charter. We wanted to wait for the first round of nominations to come in, have an initial meeting, and have that group decide like, yeah, this is what we want in the charter to take to the court to ratify.
And this way, we know that we're always representative. If something happens, somebody illness or travel or something comes up, I wanna make sure we're representative, to have that proxy would be important.
Yeah.
You wanna amend the motion?
Mayor Proten?
Uh, sure.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Dr. Laura Lee Harris to be the Kyle representative for the Hayes County Public Advisory Board, and myself as the proxy in the event that she is unavailable for a meeting.
I'll second that.
All right. Was that amenable to the second? We'll, we'll call it that, sorry. It's a, it's a, we'll call it a restated motion, uh, to add the proxy. All right, is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it.
Matthew, careful going home.
Congratulations, Laura Harris.
All right, we have got, uh, consent agenda is items six through 20. We've already done item 16. Are there other items that we would like to pull?
I have a couple of quick questions about item number seven and number 15.
All right, any other items? Movements?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, no, that's, we already did it. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember McKinney, that we approve consent agenda items six, uh, eight through 14 and seventeen through 20. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item seven, consider approval of an amendment to the contract with Rifeline for public engagement services for the 2022 road bond projects in the amount of $145,000 for a new total contract amount of $190,000. Um, uh, this item is presented by Ms. True Love. Councilmember Harris, you pulled the item to the floor.
Yeah, just one quick question. It seems really, we, it's really vague on what they're going to do for that additional amount of money, um, going from 145 to 190. Could you give us a little bit more detail on that?
Yeah, Transportation Director Mike Trumbull will be able to answer that question.
Hi, yes, um, to that question, so, um, we did an initial, um, task order with Rifeline, and they are supplementing our, our public communications and community outreach, uh, primarily for the road bond, but they're also helping us with other CIP projects as well. I think we've had a little bit of that conversation previously, is, uh, we want to do a better job, uh, getting information out to the community, um, and, and engaging the community, and really more at the stakeholder level, and so Rifeline is gonna be helping us to, um, do more of that. And so, you know, we have the, the website, we've done some open houses and all of that, but we really wanna start having those regular touchpoints with, uh, HOAs, with neighborhoods, uh, with key stakeholders in the community, also to get out and talk to property owners, uh, early, for example, on our BB East project, we still have a lot of property owners we need to talk to out there, so we want to, we start engaging them early, and so Rifeline, uh, that's their expertise, is they do more, you know, one-on-one stakeholder engagement, working with HOAs and things like that, so that's really, you know, i- in their scope to do, also to supplement, uh, what Gap Strategies is doing on the road bond. Again, their, their background is also doing more project communications and project reporting, and so they'll be supplementing that as well.
Thank you. Sounds like it'd be well worth the extra money. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion? Make a motion to approve item number seven?
Second.
Our motion by Councilwoman Harris, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approved agenda item number seven. Is there discussion on that motion? Uh, just one thing to add that, uh, I have forgotten about in recent months, but, uh, in 2013, when we passed our road bond, they put up signs on all the roads saying, "Coming Soon," and it was years before the projects came. So there was a kind of a bad feeling about the way that went down. However, we are in a position where in the next 12 months, we're breaking ground on, what, half a dozen projects, and I think that from the standpoint of public outreach, communications, and marketing, it would do us, uh, uh, a good service to have a unified, branded signage that's a physical, that has a physical presence at the boundaries of these projects, so that people can know what's, what's happening. Is that in the plans?
Yes, it is. So one of the things we're trying to do is to get some common branding and getting that out there, um, on the different projects too, and so, uh, we're actually working on revamping our communication strategy right now. Um, I'm working with our kind of joint communications team, which also includes our City of Kyle Communications Team as well, and so we're hoping to have that together and be ready to roll that out mid, late August.
Okay.
So one of the things I do want to bring up, you bring up some good points, talk about transportation plan. When we passed that years back, we've seen it now being implicated. The first part was the huge investment we did with our east side bond. Our bond is covering a lot of the east side roads that were dilapidated. The great thing is, after that, we got in partnership with the county, were able to identify their bond dollars and maximize more of the roads on the east side. So there's been a lot of work and a lot of planning going into these roads, and it's really exciting to see them going forward now, but it's all started with our transportation plan. That plan is the, the guide, the, our bible for our roadways now, and to see it really coming to fruition is really important. We're making a huge investment in our infrastructure, and I, I'm glad to see with Marketplace being the first road, getting ready to open, it's gonna be amazing to see everything else, but with that being said, Kyle's getting ready to be under construction.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a lot of construction projects, so.
Well, I mean, so it's, it's very, it's very common, we even had some citizens speak tonight on roads in East Kyle that they drove on, where's our road plan, why are we doing these higher level things as opposed to road projects? And I'm assuming that some of those roads are getting ready to break ground on major reconstruction, but it is understandable that the majority of the community does not know that, uh, because they're not attending city council meetings and paying attention, and so if we had good signage up to show the community what's coming, I think it would go a long way towards helping the narrative about whether or not we are getting ready to, um, make major road improvements now, uh, and other projects later. So I just, it's a, it's a marketing play, but it also, uh, actually gets the facts out there about what we're doing about our road projects, and I just think now's the time for that, so. All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item 15, consider approval of amendment number two to task order number six with Pape Dawson Consulting Engineers, LLC for construction phase services for the County Road 158 Elevated and Ground Storage Tanks projects in an amount of $66,640 for a new total task order amount of $1,544,308. This item is presented by Ms. True Love. Uh, Councilwoman Harris, you pulled the item to the floor.
Yeah, um, why the extra cost? Uh, just because there is a delay and they don't want, want to be on site during that particular project? Um, we've, we've had issues with Iowa, the same thing, you know, the delays, and then it adds, for some reason, extra cost into that project.
I'm gonna let, uh, the Water Utility Director, Mr. Murphy, take that.
Thank you. Mike Murphy, Director of Water Utilities. So the, the issue with, at this particular site is we have a, um, ground storage tank and pump station that's currently under construction in the same footprint as the elevated storage tank, and we thought it would be really good if we put those two together and they were able to work side by side, but what's happening is, is delaying the construction, it's slowing down the construction of the ground storage tank and pump station, which is the critical path for the water stone development and other developments in that area. So what we've decided to do is to ask Landmark to extend their, uh, timeline by six months. We don't think it's gonna be that long, but we wanted to give them that opportunity so that we could finish the ground storage tank and then start up with the elevated storage tank. And so the cost is to, is for the, um, construction inspection, uh, to, to go another six months. We don't think it will, but we wanted to go ahead and put that, put that in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so what is the actual cost? It's not going from 66,000 to 1,544, correct? Because if you're looking at this, it's kind of what it looks like.
Yeah.
And I think that's what, what the red flag was there.
No, the, the, the actual cost is just for the extension of six months.
Sixty-six thousand.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, just, seems like it's adding, but yeah, just, uh, I think that's what the red flag was there.
Yeah, well, the question was, why are we paying 66,000 for it to do nothing for a while?
Okay, sounds good. I was just making sure. Thank you.
Because we've seen that happen before.
Is that another question?
That was, that was the question. You'd, you explained that they will actually be doing expect, inspection during that time, so they will not just be idle during that period.
Movements?
Uh, we'd like to move that we approve item number 15.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilwoman Harris, seconded by Mayor Proten, that we approve agenda item 15. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, made it through consent. Here we go, considering possible action, uh, the next several items, uh, Christopher Tobias, I've forgotten which item.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. All right, next up is agenda item 21, consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity and authorizing use of eminent domain to condemn if necessary a temporary grading easement over both a 2,769 square foot parcel of land and a 1,849 square foot parcel of land as described in Exhibits A and A1 to the resolution from certain real property owned by Hometown Kyle Homeowners Association Incorporated for the public use Incorporated for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements and public drainage and utility infrastructure improvements for the old Stagecoach Road, Center Street Off System roadway improvement projects. This is a roll item. Ms. Smites.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Smites, Assistant City Manager for the Record. We've got three PCNs on the agenda for you tonight. I will give the full presentation for this first PCN and then I'll briefly touch on the next two. So in 2022, the Kyle Voters approved Proposition A. It was a road bond for eight transportation projects across Kyle, totaling 10.3 miles of new location, reconstruction and widening projects to improve the city's transportation network. This project will improve Old Stagecoach Road from Center Street to Six Creeks Boulevard. The alignment and design features were approved by the city council in January of 2024. The task order to Pape Dawson to complete preliminary design was approved in April of 2023. And we also had another task order for the final design that was approved in September of 2024. And you can see the project limits there. To acquire right-of-way easements needed for the roadway, survey was completed and appraisal was performed on the needed tract. Property interests include a temporary grading easement of 2,769 square feet and another temporary grading easement of 1,849 square feet. Improvements within the easement include grading improvements. And you can see them shaded in green there. So in summary, a public convenience and necessity or a PCN refers to the council determining whether the city's acquisition of an interest in a specific piece of real property such as an easement or fee simple title is necessary to effectuate a particular public use for the public's convenience and necessity. In this situation, the PCN finds that the Old Stagecoach Road project is necessary and required to promote the public health, safety and welfare of the community, and that acquisition of the identified property is required to complete the project. When the property owner and the city are unable to reach a negotiated agreement, the PCN authorizes the city to initiate eminent domain proceedings if necessary to acquire the needed property. So we would ask that you would approve the resolution tonight.
All right, is there any questions? Councilor Harris?
At least this sounds like we are in contention with Hometown Kyle. It's my understanding that this has been through the board of Hometown Kyle. They are very aware of our need for this property and do not object to it. But the issue is that there are a number of property owners that it's very difficult to.
Signatures.
To get their signatures on a timely basis, which is what we need is a timely basis. And they fully support our going to a PCN.
Yes, ma'am. That's what we understand. It's difficult to get all of the community members, that's required under their bylaws to, to sign off on the project. So this is a friendly condemnation is what we're referring to it as.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, I move that the City of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire a 2,769 square foot temporary grading easement and a 1,849 square foot grading easement from property owned by Hometown Kyle Homeowners Association Incorporated as described in Agenda Item 21 for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements and utility improvements for the Center Street Off System roadway improvements project.
I'll second that.
Our motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Is there discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Rizzo?
Aye.
McKinney?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item 22, consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity and authorizing use of eminent domain to condemn if necessary, a .1499 acre parcel of land and fee simple, a .1321 acre recreational trail and access easement, and an electrical easement over a .0679 acre parcel of land as described in Exhibits A, A1 and A2 to the resolution from certain real property owned by Casseta Ranch Residential Community Incorporated for the public use and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements, public recreational trail improvements and public drainage and utility infrastructure improvements for the Buntan Creek roadway improvement project. Ms. Smites.
This PCN is on Buntan Creek Road and the project limits are from Lehman Road to Porter Cove. Here you can see the alignment and the project limits. The site information here, our property interests include fee simple right-of-way of 0.1499 acres, recreational trail and access easement of 0.1321 acres, and an electrical easement of 0.0679 acres. Improvements within the right-of-way and easement include roadway reconstruction, trail improvements and utility infrastructure. And we would ask that you approve the resolution.
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments with regards to this item? I think the improvements are necessary. At the time, we, we undersized that intersection in terms of that roundabout too. So this is going to help fix that long-term. All right, I move that the City of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire .1499 acres of land and fee simple, a trail easement over .1321 acres, and an electrical easement over .0679 acres from property owned by Casseta Ranch Residential Community Incorporated as described in Agenda Item 22 for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements and utility improvements for the Buntan Creek Road Improvement Project. All right, motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McKinney, that we approve agenda item number 22. Is there discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Hi, sir?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Yes.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item 23. Councilor Tobias?
Yes, Mayor, I am going to request that I recuse myself from this vote. I do have the recusal form filled out. I do have a conflict of interest on this. It is a family member's property.
All right, thank you, sir.
Going to step away from the dice.
Okay. All right, Agenda Item 23, consider approval of a resolution finding public convenience and necessity and authorizing the use of eminent domain to condemn if necessary, a .954 acre parcel of land and fee simple and a public utility easement over a .215 acre parcel of land as described in Exhibits A and A1 to the resolution from certain real property owned by Michelle F. Aguilar, Melinda M. Falcone and Melissa A. Sloan for the public use and public purpose and purpose of construction of public roadway improvements and public drainage and utility infrastructure improvements for the Old Stagecoach Road, Center Street Off System roadway improvements project. Ms. Smites.
This PCN is for Old Stagecoach Road. The project limits are from Center Street to Six Creeks Boulevard. Here you can see the project limits and the alignment. Property interests here include fee simple right-of-way of 0.954 acres, a public utility easement of 0.215 acres, and improvements within the right-of-way and easement include roadway reconstruction, drainage and utility infrastructure. And we ask that you approve the resolution.
All right, is there a discussion on this item?
I have a question.
Councilor Harris?
So the property owners have objected to our offer. That's a question, not a statement.
I'm going to let our property acquisition attorney, Kent Sick, answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kent Sick, outside Council for the right-of-way acquisition. The landowners have not responded to the city's offer.
They haven't responded at all?
They have not responded. They are represented by council. They have not responded.
And you did have commentary about that, that they are, they are fully represented by an attorney who's done a lot. You are in communication with the attorney.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just making sure. Yeah, I knew that it was, they just hadn't responded, but I just want to make sure that we're doing everything right. We're following the letter of the law and we're giving, just doing everything right. I mean, there's, that's the biggest thing. I think that's what we're all concerned now about is making sure we're following everything right. We always have. We have the confidence that we are, have been, that practice has been what the city is doing, you know. And I know there's been a lot of, you know, question on that, but I want to make sure that, you know, right here, we're saying we're following everything by letter of the law and we're doing everything right with all these acquisitions that we're doing. That is correct. Councilmember Rizzo, we strictly follow the Texas Property Code, which governs this process and this and every acquisition the city does.
Thank you.
And they, just because we have passed this as a PCN, that does not mean that they will not have an opportunity to negotiate with us.
Correct. Councilmember Harris, the city's policy at this point is entertaining settlement proposals at any point in the process. This is just the next step that is necessary to have a special commissioners' hearing if that becomes necessary.
And we need to get that project moving. So if they're not responding, we need to get.
Yes, ma'am. This is actually a pretty critical parcel for utility relocation, which has to happen before the road can begin.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, I move that the City of Kyle authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire .954 acres of land and fee simple and a public utility easement over .215 acres of land from property owned by Michelle Aguilar, Melinda Falcone and Melissa Stone as described in Agenda Item 23 for the public use of constructing and operating public roadway improvements, drainage improvements and utility improvements for the Center Street Off System roadway improvement project.
Second.
Our motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Is there a discussion on the motion? I'll just actually back up what Councilmember Rizzo said, that, you know, I understand and want to say it publicly here, that I know that the process that you're going through, Kent and Amber as well, the, the way you're guiding us through a lot of right-of-way and acquisitions and easement acquisitions, I know that that can be difficult and you have to deal with a wide variety of property owners. Generally speaking, you know, speaking for myself, I have been very impressed by your professionalism, your care and your willingness and commitment to following the, the law exactly as best as you can. And so I just want to make sure that that's stated on the record. We, we have, we have worked really hard to cultivate these projects and we have known for years that there are several hundred pieces of property, .16 acres at a time, 1,000 square feet at a time, in order to make room for the improvement of the roadways that has been, you know, that we hear all the time are very important. And so on every single agenda, we've known that we are going to have a lot of these votes. We rely on you, but at the same time, we also understand the strategic reason to move forward with these projects. And I, I think that you and your firm are representing us very, very well and also generally speaking, doing very well with the community. As, you know, it's not always easy. They don't always go correctly and there can be some drama around that. But generally speaking, there's no one I would rather have out there. And so you're, the function you, you play in this, while not always a popular function, is a critical one. And so I'm thankful for that. So, all right, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Zuniga? Harris?
Yes.
Hi, sir?
Yes.
Tobias has recused. McKinney?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Yes. All right, motion carries six to zero. How about a 10-minute break? All right, we're gonna, we'll reconvene at 9:55. Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Next up is Agenda Item 24, consider approval of a resolution approving a city manager's recommendation to revise the city's current water restrictions from stage three to stage two with proposed amendments. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mike Murphy, Director of Water Utilities. So what we're going to be asking for with this action is to have council consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager's recommendation to revise the current water restrictions from stage three amended to stage two amended. And we've got a very brief presentation on our reasoning behind that. So the City of Kyle, since the end of June or middle of June, has been receiving water from Alliance Regional Water Authority. Currently, as of yesterday, we're receiving just over a little bit, just a little over 2 million gallons per day from Arwa. And hopefully by either tomorrow or Friday, we'll be receiving our full allotment, which is 1.73 for Kyle, and then our contract with Green Valley of 650,000 gallons per day, getting us up close to 2.4 million gallons per day. And so with, with that and with recent events of rainfall that we've had in the area, especially replenishing of the Canyon Lake watershed, Canyon Lake, as you probably all have heard in some shape, form or fashion, the elevation in Canyon Lake has gone up almost 12 feet and it's still rising. We checked it this morning. It went up five tenths of a foot between yesterday and today. So Canyon Lake is still getting water with these little micro storms that are sort of setting over that area and replenishing that watershed. This additional supply has provided the ability to begin relaxing the drought restrictions that have been strictly enforced since September of 2023. Further improvements and additional, and additional supply and system improvements that the City of Kyle is currently undertaking and a primary focus to ensure restrictions continue to be lessened as projects are complete and supplies come online. So currently, we're in a stage three or amended stage three water restrictions, which basically means that automatic, automatic irrigation is once every other week, whether spray, week, whether spray or drip irrigation on designated days between the hours of 7:00 PM and 10:00 PM. We also are allowing handheld watering any day of the week from 7:00, 7:00 PM to 10:00 AM with, with the, with the positive shut-off on the end of your water hose. And then vehicle washing, cleaning outdoor surfaces and foundation watering is allowed once per week on any day. So the stage two amended that we're recommending that we go to, automatic spray irrigation will remain as a, once every other week on, on the designated days of your, of your home or dwelling. And then the automatic watering hours be, will be extended two hours from 7:00 to 10:00 to 7:00 until midnight. Handheld watering will remain the same as it currently is. Yeah, so the, the difference, if you didn't catch it, is the drip irrigation, and that's going to be allowed once a week. Currently, it was once every other week, so we're going to relax that to once per week. All right, the stage two amended drought restrictions, these are the specified days of the, of the week where you're allowed to do your watering. It's pretty much unchanged. Hoses with sprinklers or automatic sprayers every other week. And then every week, again, to reiterate, is the drip irrigation and soaker hoses, we'll be allowing that once a week. And then handheld hoses and watering cans any day of the week. So projects that have an impact on lessening the drought restrictions in the future, and we talked about these during our budget presentation, is the full expansion of the 1626 facility, which is scheduled to be complete in the fourth quarter of 2026. 1626 transmission line, same things, their fourth quarter of 2026, maybe sooner. Our was third take point, late 2027. And then the, the water line, the main, major water line extension from 1626 to veteran, late 2027. But in a conversation with the mayor and the assistant, or with the city manager and the assistant city manager, we're going to try to move that schedule up to get that online sooner. And the reason for that is so that we're able to move, as we get more water coming to the city, we're going to be able to move that sooner. So we'll be looking for us to bring that back to council earlier than the late 2027 schedule. We're also looking at rebate programs to add to what we're already, already doing on our rebate water conservation program. And we're evaluating the potential that would compensate customers for change, for changing from a traditional irrigation system to a drip irrigation system. So we'll be bringing that back to you hopefully in the near future. And then we also want to thank our citizens on behalf of the Water Utilities. We would like to say thank you to all of our customers that have dealt with the very stringent watering restrictions and have showed confidence in our ability to serve you. It is our promise to continue developing and delivering projects that provide ample water, ample water supply to exceed Kyle's growth. So what we're asking is that council approve this resolution tonight. And obviously, staff recommends that over tonight.
All right, thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any questions? Councilor Rizzo?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I just want to kind of make a statement, because I've, I've asked a lot of questions about this to our great city manager. And I really don't love the idea of lessening the restrictions. I feel like just because we have it doesn't mean we need to start using, using it in excess like we, our traditional water habits have grown to be before the restrictions or that led up to the restrictions. And I feel like, you know, just in talking to a lot of people in my neighborhood and seeing people who are trying to take advantage of some of the programs that we have around water conservation, that we're starting to build really good habits that need to be sustained long-term. But what I've been told is given the large number of money we have spent on water infrastructure, that we have to sell the water in order to be able to pay for the infrastructure. So it's kind of a difficult situation to be in when you think about it that way. And so I just wanted to kind of get that out there because.
Councilor Rizzo?
I just wanted to add, yeah, it's, it's been great with all the rains, but I do want to take a minute just to say, continue prayers for those in Curville and the area. You know, after a great drought comes a lot, comes a flood, and it's usually the history here in central Texas. But all the prayers in the world to those communities who are suffering are really important to recognize that. But with that, after that, I just want to say, yeah, I think I have some sentiment like Councilor Heiser. What I would like to do is encourage everyone to be water-wise, encourage them to still do their best that they can to, you know, conserve water. It's, water conservation isn't a fuel good thing. It's a money thing. When you conserve water, it helps us, you know, as a city not have to do as much in, what do you call it, investing in more and more development quicker. It gives us a time to breathe. But that's, that's, it's a pocketbook thing. So hopefully people will be aware of that and continue to conserve as best as they can. Good practices, you know, landscaping, zero scape is great as well. So incentive programs are important. So continuing to do good habits, you know, So continuing to do good habits, you know, native landscape is something I would really encourage as well. But just to give you some perspective where we are today, a year ago today, Lake Travis was at 40 feet. That was the depth of Lake Travis. Three months ago, they were at 41 feet, because we got a little bit of rain. Today, we're at 86 feet. It doubled. 86 feet is Lake Travis. Lake Buchanan has opened their gates, because they're over 100 foot full, and Lake Worts is opening their gates now as well, so they've had their gates open. All that water is trickling down to Travis. We'll probably be over 100 feet here in a cou- a couple of days and opening up gates as well. So it's great to have all the water, and I don't know how long the rain's gonna last, but with that being said, just continue to, good practice is important. I'm glad that we're coming out of the stage three restrictions. I'm glad that we have some restrictions still in place. I would encourage us to keep that, some of those restrictions as a city, but allowing people to do a little bit more is, is important. But I'm gonna definitely highlight and emphasize to the public that, hey, you know, if, if you conserve water, it's only to your benefit.
Thank you. Just another piece of that, that we did, that's not in the presentation, is that we just heard from GBRA that they're, they're, they're relaxing their restrictions from, from stage four to stage two because of the lake levels in, in Canyon Lake. And if they hold those lake levels for the next 30 days, actually, it's more like 25 days now, they're, they're required to reduce their restrictions to stage one. Now, Edwards Ocafer and Barton Springs are still at stage three. So we have, we have some confidence there that we have the ability to do this.
Councilor Harris.
You kinda just answered my question.
Okay.
We are required to have at least the restrictions that Edwards Ocafer does, right? Even though we're getting Arwa water, we still.
Correct.
Have to abide by those restrictions, because a significant portion of our water does come from the Edwards still. So the Canyon Lake and the Highland Lakes are filling up rapidly. Edwards Ocafer isn't getting that much runoff as it, as those others are. So where are we in stages on Edwards?
So we're still, Edwards Ocafer, we're stage three.
Okay, so if we go to stage three, we're okay?
We're in stage three with them, which is, I think it's 30% reductions from them, or 35%.
So this, it complies?
Yes.
That you're recommending?
This does. And, and another piece of, of this puzzle that we've been working on is we're heavily into our drought contingency plan and water conservation plan, and we saw the first draft from STV yesterday. And so we've got some really cool ideas that we're gonna be bringing back to council in the next few months as we, as we continue to work on those too. And we're going to implement Water Conservation 365, which I think is what, what you two gentlemen, councilmen are talking about, is year-round conservation. So we're gonna be adding that to the portfolio.
Well, some of it we have to draw, some of the water that we draw, we have to draw it by contract, the amount.
We do. Call your contracts or take your pay contracts.
Some of it, some of it is somewhat optional. So we've got more flexibility than they, than we did have.
Councilor Tobias.
So would, could we revisit this? If, if I could tell right now that the majority of, for some of the people on council are like, you know, yes, we got rain, yes, we got the Arwa on, maybe we shouldn't just pull the trigger just yet to start going to one, stage one and two. Could we revisit, revisit this as we get closer to the end of summer? Because right now, we're at the, still, it's still hot, it's still 100 degrees, you know, we start using the water, because we have it, you don't know where we're at, you know, because, I mean, we're still getting rain, but it's gonna go through pretty quick. So should, could we look at revisiting the stages at a later time, like close to around the end of September, once the summer months start hitting out? Or would that really even matter?
Sure, I, we'd be happy to bring it back frequently, and we wanna have good updates to you all year round about the water system and supplies and what we're doing to increase capacity, the distribution of the water system. So we're happy to come back. We recommend this today to move forward with reducing the restrictions, because we do have the water supply. And I think as, we've talked about before, Arwa is what we call a firm supply, so there are no drought restrictions on that water. That is the firm supply we have, is the 2.4 million gallons per day, which is a significant amount of water compared with our existing portfolio. So we feel very confident, otherwise we wouldn't bring this to you. We do understand the concerns about conservation, and we support those, those efforts. We're not recommending to go to stage one and do whatever you want to with water. It's still a restriction that everyone's under, it's just not as strict as it was, which was an unusual time. And for a lot of folks, that does create problems with their landscapes and issues with maintaining their property the way they need to. So we have the supply that we recommend to you to do that. But certainly, Councilmember Tobias, we can come back at the end of the summer, update you where we are, continually provide you with that information. We're happy to do that and wanna make sure you, you're confident with the predictions and, and the numbers that we're showing you.
Exactly, because we just got this rain, we just got online, that's about a month and a half ago. I would say just give it a month, you know, or maybe the end of August, and then if, by then, we could say, we could vote to increase it to stage two. I'm just, I mean, I think we've done, I know there's a lot of people out there that are still, you know, not, not happy that we are, are at three, and yes, we have the water. I'm just trying to be as conservative as possible. If we've got people that are already conserving now, if we just hold off just one more month before, wait till this heat goes down, it may not, but it's, it's just, should we go ahead and pull the trigger now, since we've been, we've been at this for almost three years now, two years now?
Sure, we're happy to follow whatever direction the council has for us this evening. Again, we would be bringing this forward with the Arwa supply coming in and the additional contract with Green Valley, even if those rains had not occurred, we still would be bringing this forward to you, because that supply, that water that we have, is coming through every single day, and it's available. And as Mike said, these are take or pay contracts. So if you do not sell that water, you are still paying for all of it, even if you do not use it all. So it's a, there is a financial cost to keeping the restrictions where they are. We estimated the cost was, for the restrictions that we had in place, is approximately $2.5 million per year of lost revenue that we have by keeping the restrictions in place, which means rates have to go up for the rest of the users in the system for those sales that are not there. So for a lot of those reasons, that we're, we're looking at all this together, again, trying to be responsible, conserve the water and be, and be water-wise, but also make sure we provide the users with, with some of the benefits that we've invested in over the last several years. So I, I do understand it's difficult, but again, we wouldn't bring it here to you today if we didn't, we weren't entirely confident that we had the supply to do it.
If, if we were to go to stage two and bring some cost down for the residents, I would support that, as long as we can be able to bring some of the cost down for our residents. Because if we're saying now we have the water, then let's try to go ahead and reduce some of the, if, is it possible? We can reduce some of the rates if we're gonna go with the stage two.
Yes, sir, I, I guess I wanna make sure I'm clear on, in our five-year projections that we put together and the rate analysis that we showed you, we had assumed that the restrictions would be eliminated, which would provide more revenue. If those restrictions are not eliminated, then we would have to have even higher rates than what were projected for you. So that's, that's the, that's the answer. I, I know it's, it's not a popular answer, but that is, that is the truth.
Well, so, but just to be clear, if the, the rates are higher because the, because we're restricting the amount of water usage, it's, people are still paying the same amount, they're just using less water. So they're getting less water for what they're paying. It doesn't necessarily mean that the total bill is going up, because it's variable based on the amount that they use. So if we're saying we want everyone to use less water, one of the ways you do that is to increase the rates. But we've, we have, I do agree, we have invested substantial hundreds of millions of dollars in order to get the water supply that is now coming online. And so if we're choosing not to sell it, I don't understand necessarily the logic there, because it is, you know, a, a good, strong supply, and this stage two is still every other week watering. So it's still, you know, from the standpoint of irrigation, you know, it's, that's this, that's barely enough to keep your yard alive in the summer. And if we could sell it and people wanna pay for it, then, and we have it in a firm, fixed supply, it seems, it seems appropriate to do it.
And, and Lake Travis was at, once a week, at 40% full at the lake, they were still watering, allowing people to water once a week. We're doing every other week, so we're actually still being more cautious than some of our neighbors.
Councilman McKinney.
And one, one other thing, that historical data on Canyon Lake, the last time we, Canyon Lake was at the level it's at today, and it's still rising, but the last time was at the level it is today, it took us almost 24 months to get from that level to where we are today. So it's not like it's gonna, you know, draw down really quick, it's gonna happen gradually, very slowly, and hopefully we'll be out of this, well out of the drop by then, so.
Councilor King.
I think it's important that we, we give people the freedom for as much as our capacity allows.
Right.
To decide for themselves. You know, I, I don't like making personal buying choices for other people, and so long as we have the water that is available, I mean, I will obviously strongly encourage conservation. It's been a, you know, a big part of my core belief. Keep in mind, too, rates did go up, so the more you guys use. You're gonna have to pay for it.
Right.
So, but, you know, I, I want it to be your choice, not mine.
Yeah, and, and there's a, aside from this part of the presentation, we just got approval from TCUQ that we can start using reclaimed water, that you can, you can, you can go to the, or you will be able to go to the wastewater treatment plant for construction purposes, and there is a lot of construction happening in this area instead, and we're not allowing any use of potable water for that. So there is a, there is a, a increased cost for developers. And so now we're gonna, as soon as we get the, the signed form back from TCUQ, we will allow them to start using reclaimed water for construction, which is a really big deal.
That's huge, Mike, that's really big. So glad to hear that. And with that, let's keep an eye on anybody drawing from our hydrants, so that way they're drawing from the right source. That's, that's a big win for the city, so thank you and your team for getting that done, all of the team.
All right, any, any further discussion? Motion's?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Harris, second by Councilor Rizzo, that we approve Agenda Item 24. Is there discussion on the motion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 25, Consider Approval of a Resolution Adopting Outdoor Site Master Plan for the Regional Sportsplex. Mr. Lopez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. The purpose of the Sportsplex Site Master Plan is to provide site guidelines driven by community needs and input. In this presentation, you will see key differences and concepts from 2024 and the recommended concepts that emerge from this process. What we mostly heard in 1,400 surveys and during public input meetings and pop-up events is that Kyle residents desire more outdoor sports amenities, but also desire indoor sports, fitness, and recreation amenities. However, they want these to be, for Kyle residents first and foremost. Although more information is needed on the feasibility of an indoor recreation center, such as priority of needs and funding possibilities, this is a critical first step down the path of due diligence. It bears repeating that the Site Master Plan adoption is not an obligation for implementation or funding, but rather serves as a guidance, informed guidance for implementation. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Mark Malinato of Urban Alchemy Collective to present what I hope will show as a Kyle-centric Sportsplex Master Plan. Mark.
Mayor, Council, staff, good evening. It's a really exciting time and pleasure to be here tonight as we present the, the completion and the end of this part of the journey for the Sportsplex Master Plan. As you guys know, this, this journey has been a little bit over a year, but very robust in not only in coming up with different design alternatives, but making sure that we get feedback from the community and looking at the highest and best use for, for this site. Quick contents of tonight's presentation, it's just gonna be recap of the journey, what we heard, and then how, how all this information came together to, to influence and shape the final master plan. As you guys know, the approximately 90 acre site is located off of FM 1626, that is straddled by the highway. You know, it, it's connected by the Vibe Trail, adjacent to the Brick and Mortar District. This journey, even though it has been primarily focused over the last year, there's been a lot of history with this site and, and this opportunity. As previously mentioned, in November 3rd of 2020, the Park Bond got approved by the voters for the exterior improvements of the, of the Sportsplex site, along with the interlocal agreement with, with the county for matching funds, and then the kickoff of the master plan effort in June of 2024. To recap the process, the process, the planning process was really broken up into four different phases. Phase one, which was site analysis and discovery. Phase two, visioning and ideation, where we did a lot of community outreach, stakeholder engagement. Phase three, concept development, where we looked at different alternatives, and we looked at, at master plan scenarios. And then phase four, where we came up with the final master plan, the opinion of probable construction cost, and then implementation strategies. Now, one thing that I wanted to recap was, you know, through the involvement of the community and stakeholder feedback and, and a lot of the discovery, we were able to come up with the project vision and project goals that, that really outlined what we envisioned this, this site and this complex to be. The vision for the Kyle Sports Complex is to create a unique destination that embodies the proud and vibrant spirit of our community. The Sports Complex will offer a variety of amenities, sports, and foster an inclusive and connected environment for all. When we talked about goals, you know, we really wanted to highlight different components and, and make sure that the, that the design really channeled these elements, you know, for example, creating a multipurpose destination, you know, a, a destination that fosters and connects to the community, a place that enhances community amenities, but also boosts economic development. And then also that offers a strong branding and community identity, so that you have a sense of place and a sense of pride, that's something such as is, is great in your backyard. Now, one of the things that I wanted to, to mention was that, you know, before we went out to the community, we had developed two different concepts, and we kind of went, you know, extreme one way on, on one concept and extreme the other on the other. So starting with Concept A, Alternative A, we really wanted to focus on a strong regional draw that was really focused on economic development and economic catalyst opportunities. It is very much focused on active recreation, and we really wanted to maximize the site for athletic uses. So not necessarily focusing on budgetary constraints, but really looking at how we could maximize the site for, for the highest and best use for that regional draw. So Concept A really focused on the, the design and implementation of numerous fields. There's some, there's a connection of the Vibe Trail, but also other elements that would, would provide to the community, but also allow room for expansion, like for example, a parking garage or an indoor recreation center. But more importantly, the major differences between Concept A and, and what you're gonna see shortly are gonna be mostly on the east side of FM 1626, where we really try to maximize the, the site for highest and best use for that economic regional draw. Moving on to, to Concept B, we went the, the opposite direction. We really wanted to be local, community-focused, more passive recreation, nature-inspired, but really look at facilities planned for potential partnership or strategic partnerships that could help, you know, in, in a symbiotic relationship of some capacity. So Concept B, as you noticed, starting on the east side, there's a lot less field, the infrastructure is way more reduced, you do have a series of pickleball courts, you have the Vibe Trail extension, that's a little bit larger, you have a variety of fields and a much smaller footprint for a potential indoor recreation center, but although additionally, additional community amenities that have been incorporated in here that, that would cater to the local community. So having completed these two concepts, we then went out to the community, where we did a lot of listening and learning, and making sure that we got feedback from the community to see what were their initial thoughts on some of these ideas. You know, we've mentioned before, but we had a really positive feedback where, where it was something to be extremely proud of. Collecting over 4,000 data points with over 1,100 surveys, two community pop-ups, number, number, I'm sorry, two community workshops, numerous pop-up events, and, and different touchpoints, we were able to collect a lot of data that not only influenced the entire parks and recreation system master plan, but also this specific master plan as well. So while we collected a lot of information for the Pro's Master Plan, the Park System Master Plan, there was a lot of good information that we, we kept at a high level, but there was also a lot of feedback that was provided specific for the Sports Complex component, where. where we were able to, to take that, that feedback and start weaving it into a potential master plan, or understanding what does a community really, really want. You know, and what we realized was, while we, um, while we have some gaps in the parks and recreation system, there was also opportunities for this site to help connect some of those dots and fill some of those gaps while catering to the local community. In short, what we heard was that the city of Kyle residents want more trails. They want more playgrounds, gathering spaces, and then athletic, uh, facilities and amenities, as demonstrated here. These are all, uh, based on these, uh, community engagement results and those four thousand data points that we collected. But moving on from facilities and amenities, what, uh, what we learned for indoor recreation was that the community wants a gym and fitness center for indoor recreation. They want indoor basketball courts, soccer fields, community rooms, programming rooms, and aquatics as their top priorities. And this is specific to the sports complex. Now, everything that we heard wasn't all positive. You know, we heard a number of concerns and issues that, that we should be cognizant of as we're developing the master plan. Some of these included, you know, outside users or exclusive, exclusive tournament used for a specific entity or agency. We needed to be cognizant of budget costs, increased traffic, increased taxes, and also be realistic about maintenance and operation requirements. But going beyond just the, the site boundary, we really wanted to zoom out and say, well, what are the opportunities for, for this site or an amenity like the sports complex to help bridge the gap between the, the need that the city of Kyle Park and Recreation System has? You know, so before the sports, uh, complex concepts, we were really only meeting four amenity types or facility types according to the NRPA standards. So, all the numbers on the, on the right column that are in red are deficient, um, according to national standards compared to what the city of Kyle currently provides. And as you'll see shortly in the final master plan, incorporating some of these elements that we propose in the master plan helped bridge a lot more of those, those needs by providing seven, or meeting or exceeding expectations and, um, and standards of seven different categories. And so we're also looking at, at that domino effect of, of making sure that we're being strategic, but also trying to, to incorporate amenities that will help not only cater to the community, but also get us on the right baseline and standards that we need to be on. The final master plan, in short, reflects community feedback and comments that was co-created by the community. It's a blend of active and passive recreations, and it provides missing amenities and facilities in the park and recreation system that are highly needed and demonstrated not only to peer cities, but according to national standards. So, loo- looking at the final master plan, what you start seeing here that's, that's presented is a blend of a little bit of Concept A, a little bit of Concept B, but also a lot more of what the community told us and guided us, that, you know, they wanted spaces that were nature-inspired, that were environmentally conscious. They wanted trails, they wanted shade areas, exercise areas, they wanted more, more courts and facilities. They wanted indoor recreation, they wanted these community spaces that you don't have to pay for, that they are open to the community. But they also wanted a place for, for families to come to, together and celebrate and have a sense of belonging and pride that they, uh, they could also use from a multi-generational approach. So, the overall master plan includes a variety of amenities and, and, um, facility types that definitely cater to a wide spectrum of all generations and all demographics. Now, we know that this is a huge undertaking and a huge investment, and it can't be all done overnight or in a short amount of time. So, one of the things that we did, we, we tried to break it down into bite-sized pieces of some capacity. You know, we wanted to not call it a phasing strategy because we didn't know what phases we really wanted to work on, or how we wanted to align those phases, but to take them into a little bit smaller bite-sized, uh, phases where we could say, okay, well, maybe we focus on this area, this area, but also from a constructability standpoint, you know, segregating these areas as such, as demonstrated, just kind of made sense. So zooming into each one of these areas quickly. Area one A is the area outlined in blue here, where it incorporates the championship field, a variety of soccer fields, volleyball and basketball complex, parking area, and then incorporates the Cromwell Extension there. That experience, what it would look like, you would have these, these fields, you would have a grand corridor with a lot of shades and planting, native plantings, that, that would make it comfortable for, for audience members or spectators to, to look at the recreation happening. Here you have the Cromwell Extension and a bridge viewing east with potential branding and placemaking. And then basketball courts, shaded pavilions, again, a lot of nature-inspired elements that would help provide shade and comfort for this area. Moving on to Area One B, this is on the north side of the creek, uh, following Cromwell Extension towards Rickerson. You have two soccer fields with parking lots, um, landscape and wayfinding here as a potential, um, phase or, or, um, implementation strategy. Again, multi-generational play, ability to, to use these courts for a variety of events as well. Area two is, is an area that kind of stood alone, uh, stood out as an area by itself for us, where, uh, it has a placeholder for a potential indoor recreation center, footsall and multi-use complex of different courts. It has this grandiose, uh, plaza of arrival, uh, where you could have a potential splash pad, but also food and beverage, uh, facilities, uh, and other amenities that cater to the community where you don't have to pay to play, um, in a large, uh, parking lot. Now, this area, um, again, going back to the community engagement that we, we hosted, we asked the question, you know, would you want indoor recreation? Is that a top priority, priority for you? Overwhelmingly, seventy-three percent of the community said yes. At the time, we didn't ask any more questions beyond that, like what does the inside look like? What are the priorities or whatnot? That should come at a later phase, but, but for these purposes of this master plan, for now, we just have a potential space, uh, a placeholder and footprint saying, this is where something like this could go, but we definitely see this as its own area that should be implemented, um, separately, um, and, you know, with further studies. Here's some renderings of what that could potentially look like. Jumbotron facing that community plaza space that, that we could have live events or regional events, local college sports, uh, that splash pad, shaded area, food and beverage halls here. Those multi-use courts that I mentioned previously with, with basketball, maybe pickleball or multi-stripe here, but really that sense of belonging and community space that welcomes all. Area three is the area that straddles both sides of FM sixteen twenty-six and really focuses, focuses on the expansion of the Vibe Trail. Total, I believe, of three miles of Vibe Trail expansion. But more importantly, it's the connectivity improvements that, uh, are provided through a, um, tunnel connecting the, the east and west, west side of the tract. And then lastly, what you see is Area Four, which is in the far east, where we have a pickleball com- uh, complex, you have a multi-use field, you have a lot more of the, the Vibe Trail, nature plantings, native gardens. You have an all-inclusive play, playground, uh, disc golf area and a dog park that specifically catered to the local community that were elements that, that were identified in the community feedback that we received as elements that were needed and could be provided on this site. We were definitely cognizant of cost in this area. As you see, the, the infrastructure and improvement are much more minimal than like Concept A. But also, we were, uh, we were able to facilitate, you know, drainage improvements, water flow, and connectivity through, through the proposed, um, improvements that were shown here in this overall. Here's a rendering of the potential, uh, pickleball co- uh, complex here. And then site plans on the all-inclusive play area, uh, dog park area, and a little bit more detail there. So, in conclusion, it's been a great journey. We anticipate this, this plan be kind of the guiding star, the, the beacon that will not only be a strategic document that you guys can, can reference and, and go back to to, to see how we can, you know, improve connectivity, but, but have, uh, different amenities and facilities provided for the community, but also potentially be used as funding strategies or, or as conversation pieces with, uh, strategic partners that you might, uh, wanna consider. But in regards to next steps, we have a couple of considerations for you guys, you know. Step one would be to adopt this master plan as a development guide or that, that strategic document that you can use for, for growth or strategic decisions and, and planning for the future. In the near future, review and approve an outdoor recreation design contract that focuses on the elements that already have funding, which would be probably that Area One A or One B that I, I mentioned earlier. And then lastly, review and approve the indoor recreation programming, uh, and master plan contract that would engage a lot more in-depth study and feasibility analysis of the indoor recreation that would also give the opportunity to go back out to the community to ask them specifically, what do you want inside this indoor recreation center? What do you want it to look like? What spaces are gonna be a priority for you guys? What funding would you support? You know, what kind of economic strategies, uh, would, would you guys be in favor of and, and whatnot? So, uh, these are all things that, that we would like for you guys to consider as next steps. But with that said, um, David, I don't know if you have anything else? Otherwise, we will open up the floor to any questions that you guys may have.
All right, thank you, Mark. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Commissioner Harris.
I noticed that on neither of the plans is there baseball or softball fields, and those are a deficit, and they did come up pretty, I don't know where they came up on the citizen input.
Yes, we recognize the deficit in our system from the comprehensive pros' master plan. There are some other park projects that, the conceptual and master planning design is underway that will address some of those needs or improve on some of those existing facilities that we have in our system to make it more, um, like a competitive level play for the community.
Okay, um, and I just wanted to make a note that we do have a community garden in it on our list of amenities that we have in the city. It says zero, but we do have one. It's a really nice one.
I don't know. Fairly new. Commissioner Heiser.
Yeah, I just, I, I wanna say thank you for working so hard on this. The, the presentation looked great. You know, having been on the sportsplex, sportsplex task force with Councilmember Rizzo for the last, what feels like eighteen months, uh, I know a lot went into, uh, defining what it was, what it is that the city has asked for. And, um, I think you guys, you did a great job. We really badly need more sports infrastructure. I hear from people all the time who complain about having to drive, uh, a long ways, and you think of how that, uh, time adds up over the course of a year, uh, and that's just per kid. So the amount, uh, you know, bringing sports to, back to Kyle and, you know, is gonna make a big impact. And, you know, just the public health of it all is really important. And, you know, I think it gives us some identity as well, uh, to have that be an anchor, uh, on the north end of our city. So, I am thrilled, uh, to, to be voting on this tonight.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I did have a resident reach out to me and ask about, uh, the draw. What are we reaching for? Are we looking for more local or more regional draws? Are we looking for outside entities? I think, um, and, and I'll let you answer that in a minute, but for me, I'm looking at the local level. I'm looking at allowing everyone to come in and use this from our community. I'm thinking about those kids that are in the, uh, more, uh, lines of parents can't really afford the big sports leagues, can't afford all the other stuff. I wanna make sure those kids, as a city, we're gonna bring in programming that's gonna allow these kids to come in. And honestly, with the competitive thing, parents pay a lot of money for it. I mean, a lot of money for these clubs, and the clubs have turned more into winning. It's not about developing kids anymore. It's about winning, winning, winning. It's changed the mentality. When I was, uh, young and coaching a lot of teams, a lot of the teams were around. It was about developing every kid. I always used to joke around and say, you're as good as, you're, your coaching is as good as your weakest player on your team. If your weakest player's not playing, you're not making it as a coach. And that's something that I, I always think. One of the examples right now is the T-ball. Having the T-ball league that the city has started has been really phenomenal. We've got kids now coming in that are not about just competing. It's about having fun, learning the skills, and getting in there. It's not a, I've seen the difference from the paid sports leagues to what we're doing now with the city, and what we're doing is better, because now every kid gets an opportunity. Every kid's growing and maturing and is turning into a, a better person, right? Athletically, but also, uh, as a, as a person to be able to enter, you know, whatever field they want to one day because they have that, uh, encouragement, right, uh, to succeed. So it's important. But I think, uh, if we continue to, uh, invest this, let's look at the local level, because the local level's gonna be really, really important. And, uh, if it's, if it's a building that can host some, uh, you know, tournaments, just making sure that we don't forget the local level aspect, or we're making sure that the kids locally are benefiting from this, because it's gonna be a huge investment one day. Is it gonna happen? We don't know. We're just adopting the plan right now, and maybe one day the voters say, let's make it happen, right? We don't know, the, the residents, uh, but it's, it's something that we can look at. We have some funding right now to get started, and let's maximize those dollars because those dollars are pointed towards parks and, uh, get started on this. But I'm really excited about this plan. Thank you for your public engagement. I saw you all out at market days. Y'all did everything but grab people off the street, and you kind of did that in a way, you know? But you were trying to bring in a lot of engagement. We can't force people. You did everything but knock on their doors, right? Uh, and, uh, but it was great to see y'all out there. And there were some days you were out there, it was hot, some days it was kind of misty, and to see you out there wanting to get engaged to the community was really a great, uh, great to see. It showed us as a city, we picked the right firm to come out and do this, uh, study and make sure you got all the feedback you could. So, thank you for your hard work, for you and your team, and, uh, I'm looking forward to one day seeing all this kind of fruition. It's gonna happen overnight. No, we're gonna have to, we're limited by funding, right? So we're gonna do all we can, and I'm looking forward to, uh, really seeing these projects take off and seeing our kids out there playing. That's what we're investing is our children, so it's really important for me, so thank you.
And, and I think the noble part of this process for all of us was that we really set aside what our, our personal desires were on this project and deferred to the community, and we heard a resounding Kyle-first response on this project. They wanted it to serve the local community.
Additional comments? Commissioner Tobias.
All right, I, I kind of understand the overall mission behind the sportsplex, the engagement that was done. And I know that I would be very interested to, to see if there's, if there was partners later on in the future, but it's really hard to say. But I'm just going to be kind of, unfortunately, the devil's advocate on this because, uh, I, I do see it's, it's a lot. I mean, I was just trying to kind of follow along with the, the plans, and it's, it's everywhere. You know, and, versus trying to narrow down one concept with the funding that we have available. So, the, the questions I have or the things that I'd like to address is, if you see how wide and spread this whole complex is, and this would have to come from a city standpoint, I mean, what, what do we, what would we be looking ballpark figure for staffing of all of this? Uh, because it looks like it's, it's a massive, um, you know, project. And, and do we have this, are we looking long-term for staffing on this? The cost of the facilities to run? Uh, it, it's one thing to say, this is a grand facade, and this is great, and we wanna build out, but we've gotta worry about the infrastructure, the roads that's gonna lead to this place. And I know I've been hearing it would be great to be able to bring the outsourced revenue inside, but again, you know, when we only have two hotels here, two motels, you know, and we're trying to have regional tournaments, where's the partnership gonna lie on that? You know, where, where, you know, which, which partnership are we gonna go with? Are we gonna go outside of the city to look for that? Is county involvement, how's the county gonna be involved, if they are? So, some of the questions that the, the people have brought up are legit as far as, you know, the funding and the needs of this area. The restaurants, the hotel stays and stuff like that. So, those are things from day one, when we started talking about this, have always been on the back of my mind. It's not just so much the people that came in and, and, and spoke.
Hey, Michael, can I clarify two things? Just, it's being in all the meetings on the task force with Robert and Michelle and, and Mark, this is very much a phased approach. So this is not like an all-at-once thing that, that we, because yes, it is a lot, but it is a, a long-term vision. It is not something that was, you know, expected to happen all at one time because, you know, there, yeah, you're correct, there are infrastructure needs that need, that have to take place in order to sustain this kind of, um, sports infrastructure. So, I just wanted to put that out there, because I, I hear what you're saying, and I do not disagree with you from a funding standpoint and a infra- infrastructure standpoint. And those are all things that we had talked about in those. And those are all things that we had talked about in those meetings, you know, for a long time was just trying to find the right fit of what can work well together.
Yeah, because in the end, the people see just the bottom dollar. So when you're adding up the field, you're adding up this 30 million here, 2 million here, 4 million there, 3 million there, it, it all comes down to like, holy geez, we got $161 million for this whole area. How are we going to pay for all this? Number two, if you start partnering up with outside corporations, my, my thought is, are they going to become boards of regions to where they're going to be the ones that are going to be deciding what teams are going to be out there, what, what types of sports, the pricing, the parking? All of that together i- is something that, that I know that the residents will be saying, well, what does that leave the rest of the people here in Kyle? If we're bringing people from Dallas, people from San Antonio, people from Houston to come to this complex, they're going to need places to eat. Okay? And what we have right now is a Drive River District and across the street and other small places. But then that means that if we over capacitate our restaurants during those weekends, people are going to eventually go elsewhere also to eat, to house, and so forth. So those are things that, you know, I know this is a concept design, but I think the city also has to look at, okay, where are we pulling the economic funding from? Because in the end, you will, you will leave out the locals because they will be stuck with traffic, they will be struck with long lines at restaurants, they will be stuck on a waiting list to be able to just go play basketball because you've got a tournament that has paid the fees to use those sports fields, and, you know, they're, they're kind of stuck out.
Yeah, so if you look at the concept design, you'll see that it's not designed for big, big tournaments. We just, we, we didn't have enough space. We didn't have enough fields for that. What we're looking at right now is more at a, a narrow scope. You know, could something like that happen? I don't know. I mean, there's always been talk about sports, professional sports teams coming in or something like that, an outside agency. But when you look at the total landscape, is there a possibility? Maybe, but really, all that would be in the future, and it would be up to the residents to decide that. It's not going to be a council decision. It'll be a resident decision because the funding has to come from the residents, right? But the other thing is going to be is that it's, it's not a now thing. Anything we build or we agree to right now will still be two years out. If we decide to go with an indoor complex, it'll probably be three, four years out, five years out. But when you do get these region, these nodes in there, these sport, small sports places, even if it's for just locals, you're going to have infrastructure come with it. You're going to have restaurants, everything, because they'll see the need for that. And so it's all going to get built in. But no, it's, it's, those are legitimate questions. You're asking good ones. I think the residents have been asking those as well. I've gotten some of those as well. And right now, what we're building is, is, is not at any scale of bringing in big tournaments. We're, we're building for the locals with the first phase in our funding. So it's kind of what we're doing right now, and would, you know, we don't know where we're going to go actually. It'll be something that we can discuss as things pop up, but really, right now, it's on a plan. It's a concept we have, and some of it's wishful thinking, right?
Has the task force looked for outside sources or outside partnerships to?
Not, not really looking, but if somebody were to approach us, we definitely hear them. We, you know, I think there's always been talk, and sports teams have come out, reached out to us, but has anything ever panned out? Not really yet. So it's one of those things where, you know, you might, you might not. I mean, it's still a 50/50. So I think sometimes sports, big sports teams might not be interested, but really, right now, we're building for.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, have we been like, is the idea of like, select teams, things like that have been looked at as far as?
No, we haven't discussed about select teams.
If I could maybe just add a little commentary, a conversation to have on this. I mean, the, the first thing is, it is of large cost. $162 million is no doubt about it, a, a large amount of money, but it's a large area. So we wanted to have a master plan that over time, you had an idea of where did you want to put assets and why? So it would be an organized way to build this out over time. The way we look at it is this area one A is the most logical place to start, as well as Cromwell Avenue. That needs to be extended up to Rickardson. That will take us some time to engineer and then build that road. We think that's a critical project to put the infrastructure in here so as, that we can build out the rest of the sites. The western side of this is going to be the, the first start of it. We do have funding for that. We have identified about $33 million for this first phase. 14 of that is the bonds that were approved by the voters in 2020 that we have waited five years to deploy. So we think it's important to get moving on getting those dollars deployed because every year that we wait, the cost of construction goes up. So we want to make sure we had a good solid plan so we spent them in the right way. And then the last thing I would say is, your point about economic activity and making sure we have restaurants and hotels, my opinion of this development in this sports complex helps drive additional restaurants, additional economic activity in places to be. We have a hotel site in the brick and mortar district just south of here. We hopefully, hopefully this can help activate that site so you can get another hotel. We have a restaurant site next to Hero's Memorial, which we're working to try to activate to get that restaurant built. But this additional activity, the sports tourism that we've talked about with the task force, bringing people into Kyle helps activate more of those businesses. So we see it as net positive for the community as the more of these type of assets that you have, the more people that want to come to Kyle, the better retail offerings and, and hotels, those things will come because there's a demand for it. And that's one of the things we saw with some of the data, in particular on the indoor complex that we looked at last year, is there is a clear overnight use for those kinds of facilities. That's not necessarily in this, that's in phase two, but those things can generate room nights, they can generate needs for hotels. So I, I see it's a phased approach. It's very expensive to do all of these. Obviously, we, we can't do all of that at one time, but this would lay out an organized way to how to develop it over time. So that's hopefully some information as you guys think about this and consider kind of what you want in the master plan, gives us a chance to try to move forward. And that, that was the intent, I think, when council hired the consultant to do the master planning is to get a plan together so we know how to start marching through that process.
That's good, yeah. So, yeah, those are, those are legit questions that I had. Because again, if, if, if that's where we're heading and it lures, what you're saying, everybody's saying it lures those businesses to our area, then, then that could eventually lead to a more positive impact as far as how to pay for all this. But as far as for right now, I guess, we do have that money, or we did have that bond money passed five years ago. And I'm not sure, correct me if I'm wrong, but after a certain amount of time, after a bond goes through, we've got to start utilizing it, correct? To where we need to get kind of some kind of, something on the ground, just like our road bond, right?
Right. It, it's typically after a number of years, I want to say 10, that authorization could expire if you've never issued the bond. So some of these bonds we haven't issued yet because they weren't being deployed. So we're ready to issue those bonds and move forward with the project. And that would be the idea.
And we all know that bond dollars don't increase. Price of material goes up, labor goes up, so making sure we get these projects done now is important because of, you know, for what we've already been allocated, because bond dollars don't increase.
Any additional thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I just want to make some comments too. Brian, you said we had about $35 billion, and 14 of that was in a bond. I guess the other 21, did that come out of last year's budget or I guess into our five year CIP money?
So it, it was 33 million, Councilmember Zuniga that I referenced, 14 million of it was bonds, and then the other pieces were in tours, and there was some allocation from other funds. I'd have to go back and pull all those sources, but we had that in the CIP that we identified how to, how to fund this. The largest portion is that 14 million in existing bond funds.
Yeah. I, you know, we're, we've been trying to see how this could work long-term, and we're looking at this in pieces and what fits, and how do we get, you know, a partner in this? You know, we've had two, two potential, I guess, partners come to us, but with the most recent one, I mean, there was a, there was mention that it wouldn't create, you know, enough revenue, and that was even with the stadium put in there. So, you know, that, that's just my only concern is that, you know, even if we, you know, bring in a partner, you know, finance, we don't, we don't know financially, there'll be enough revenue to pay for the, you know, the, the maintenance and, and upkeep and, and all the rest of that stuff. But I, but I still think we can find a partner that will, that will maybe, you know, build up more of this sportsplex area for us so that we don't have to, you know, bond out or, or rely too much on, on, on our residents and even the county. So it's just, to me, I feel like, you know, whoever we look for and partners with us has to bring a big amount to the, to this project for us, you know? Right now, are we, are we thinking of any bond money or, you know, this year, calling a bond or, you know, have we looked at any of that, you know, before, before November?
No, sir. That's not part of the plans. You, you would have to call at an election in the next, just a few weeks, and we think that's premature. We're not ready to, to recommend that to you. So there is no recommendation for a new bond to be sold or to market it to the voters in November.
Any, so what do you, what are your thoughts on the partnership? Because as I mentioned, you know, the partner is important for such a big project like this because it's, it's a heavy, it's a heavy lift for, for Kyle.
Well, if you're asking me, I, I mean, I would, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to jump in on a couple things. So one is, so the, the, it's really important to understand that there's something intention here. Local, 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 we want it, and we want it for free, and we want it for all of us is, how do you pay for that? Or private, private, private is, we want you to pay for it, but we lose the local. Both of those are wrong. So this project must go forward with both a public amenity use that is, that is designed for the locals and good select leagues or partners that will help to generate revenue to take some of that burden off. Both of those things have to happen simultaneously in order for this project to succeed. So you are correct, Councilmember Zuniga, we have, we have looked at doing partnerships with various groups, and they haven't panned out. It just hasn't, it hasn't been the right fit. But, you know, there, there are opportunities for us to, you know, to move forward piece by piece. This 90 acres, if you'll think about it, a great example of a private investment that was made at no cost to the taxpayers was Nitro Swim, who came here to this location because for eight years, we have been working to put this master plan project together with, going all the way back to Lennar's phase, phasing in and, and turning a regional detention center into a super regional detention center that's graded for sports infrastructure. They came here and it cost us nothing, but guess what? No local when you do that. Everybody has to pay because it's a for-profit business. So the idea here is just, let's start, let's put together a master plan, let's figure out one piece at a time. And, you know, if we wanted to do the indoor complex, which I think the voters would approve, clearly not everyone thinks that, that we need to be investing in sports infrastructure, but that's fine, you know? Like, not everyone is a senior, yet we're investing in senior center amenities. You know, not, not everyone drives the east side roads, but we, the what, are investing in the east side roads and, and vice versa. To, to do this right, you have to think, what are the, it's exactly what Mark said at the beginning, or I think David said about, we're taking our personal thoughts out of it aside, and we're trying to look at where are the hugest gaps of amenities in the community? And this has been a clear, resounding cry out from a big chunk of our population who has children. Sometimes the children are disadvantaged, and they want them on a free T-ball league. Sometimes they want to have them in a select volleyball league, and they want to win. Both of those are great, and they're both in high demand. So I'm just, my, my hope and goal for this over time is that we can try to find a way to take that entire list of every number that's red, meaning that our sports infrastructure is abysmal compared to the entire region, and we have the most children in the entire region. We are failing them by not having a vision for sports infrastructure, failing them. And I think if we took this as an opportunity to put together a master plan, and then we took this to the voters to say, not what does two people or someone on Facebook have to say about this, but what do the voters have to say? Because as has been clearly identified, the more people we talk to, the more important this is to our community, not individuals, the whole community. So let's just take this as an opportunity to put this plan together that we've been working on for years, put a first phase in, in motion, and then next year, if, when we are ready, we can take a proposition to the voters for an indoor sportsplex, hopefully with a private partner, but understanding, and we've said this from the very beginning, we don't want to lose either side, the, the revenue and economic development generation or the, the intense public use that we want to have our parks and rec leagues in various other ways where we're making good investments for our kids so they can use it too. Put all that together, take it to the voters, and let them decide. They will say yes. Regardless of what a few people say, I'm confident that the voters will support this proposal because there's nothing people tell me they want more. So I'm just, let's, let's not play like this isn't something that we have talked about at length a lot of times over the last several years, understanding that, yes, there are going to be challenges, but we can do this. We can start taking this piece by piece and try to start to draw back from that every, we, we are, we are the worst in region in every single one of these categories with the most children, and start saying, no, let's lean into that. We should be planting our flag in sports infrastructure for select leagues and for parks and rec leagues, both. And I think we can do that.
And so if you could just let me clarify what I meant by partnering, partnering up or have we looked in that direction? You're right, we do. The last time we had this long discussion, I listed every single elementary school in Kyle, and I listed every single middle school in Kyle. And I think the number came out to 10,850 kids just in Kyle between Negley, Chop, everywhere else, because, you know, you're looking at each capacity of, from first grade all the way up. So you're looking at about that many kids. So when I'm looking at, when I'm saying by partner up, I'm also looking at possibly, have we looked at the school district itself? Have we looked at the select teams? And I'm thinking, and, and I love them to death, and I see them, you got the Colin Vaders that they use the Lehman football fields. And then I had somebody reach out to me over the winter time that a league here in Kyle, they were going to the nationals or finals in Dallas, and they were constantly calling me, is there a field in Kyle that we can practice? Because it's now daylight savings, we're having to get our cars parked so we can line them up like Remember the Titans and have the lights there because there's no fields at, at Steeplechase to where they can turn them on at night and practice in. So when I'm talking about that, I'm talking again about locals as well. Okay? We have to invest, you're right, Travis, we, Mayor, we have to invest in our kids that are here in Kyle. We have to invest in building that bond within the school district because, or if there's a field that they need to use. So I'm clarifying when I mentioned, have we reached out to other sources? I haven't heard from any of the task force that we've done that. Because if we're trying to stay local, like you said, you know, this could be that opportunity for that. And then, and then it drives the, the revenue and so forth on that end. It just, it just, we have to, we have to be also keep in mind that no matter what it is, what, what's the mission, what's the goal, who we reached out to, it always going to eventually comes down to the mighty dollar. How are we going to pay for all of this? And I think that's the biggest battle cry, the biggest megaphone that I hear so much from everybody is how is this going to be paid for?
Well, I, I agree with you. We have, we have funded 33 million, including about half of that voter approved, quarter of that coming from the county who had support. half of that voter approved, quarter of that coming from the county who, uh, had support. The next phase, if we were to go for, um, area two, um, you know, or one B, but really area two, that is a, that is a bond proposition. That is something we have to take and allow the voters to decide if they want to pay for it. And then also, uh, how are we going to generate revenue from within the project in order to help offset the maintenance operations? We do that so that we can have the amenity for the community. You must do this to get this, to take the red off. We have to have a big vision. And part of the reason why this particular site has been what we focused on is so we can create that economic development synergy that brings hotels, which brings hotel tax revenue and property tax revenue and restaurants, which brings sales tax revenue, people coming in to play tournaments and, uh, at our facility for a portion of the use. That is an important driver because it drives the cost down for the residents. Otherwise, if we say, you know what, we don't want private investment, we don't want select leagues, we don't want anything like that. We want, if you don't have a Kyle zip code and get to play for free, you can't touch it, then it will cost a tremendous amount or we won't be able to, uh, deliver the assets. You're just not going to get the quality that you want. I want our kids to not have to, the future children to not have to play soccer the way my children had to play soccer because I just raised my kids playing soccer in the city of Kyle. They could not play anywhere, surge, uh, all of the different leagues we played. The only place we could go was Five Mile Dam. It is completely overrun and the standard, the field standards, there's not any lights or amenities that are out there. It's just completely not, uh, good enough. And then the other one is to go up to the Hayes place, uh, up, uh, in Buta, and that's like a cow pasture out there. I was afraid they were going to break their ankles trying to play soccer. It's just, there's nothing. So what the vision, this is about what is the vision? What are we trying to accomplish here? And, and it is put together a big space with a, with a, with a, a lot of different ways of rolling out these amenities over time. We have to have the community fully bought into this. And I don't mean five people or a Facebook page. I'm talking about the city of 66,000 people who are the ones who pay the taxes. They're the ones who get to weigh in on whether this project goes forward. We should not, because we are afraid of what a few people have to say about it, not move forward to give the residents the chance to make their saves, uh, to have their actual say, the true residents, not five people. And so that's what I hope we can do. And I think we have the opportunity to do that, but we can't determine those future partnerships until we first start with a fully vetted master plan, which is what this task forces and Mark's team and our Parks Department have done such a great job of putting together a plan for us to put in motion. And we start with the basic bones, let the community see the vision for it, and then ask them in terms of a ballot initiative next year.
So counter offer the question, the answer, or the comment that you made about the fields that you went to that were cow padders, whatever, rocks, gravel, whatever it is, goes back to my original question to you then. How would you be looking at staffing? Because staff is going to have to make sure that we maintain those fields the way they are. So I guess that would be a question is that what kind of plan would you put in place to say if we're going to go with area A or area B, what would be your long-term goals as far as getting staff there and so forth?
I even take it a step back further. You have to have maintenance standards and you've got to have a skilled team equipped to do these things. Uh, I think we've been on that path for the past year or so. Uh, the level of talent within Parks and Recreation and getting licensing and certifications and even the quality of care through the standards of care that, that the team has developed have increased. Um, if you're asking about the O and M component, um, yeah, we run O and M on every project. Just as an example, if you're looking at one A, maybe you're looking at adding an additional caretaker for that acreage and the amount of fields. So, um, you know, there, there's an O and M.
There'll be specialty grass and so forth.
Yeah. And then there's opportunities to cost recover based upon whatever program, whether either city-run leagues or if we partner with some type of local league and there's some kind of revenue share. Those are opportunities to recover on the O and M, but you see that for the entire facility.
Yeah. And we've also been doing a big CIP project that we've already spent several million on to bring reclaimed water to the site. Meaning, because when you have field space and we're in a drought and you can't water because you're putting potable water on the ground, that's a, that's, the, the vision here is we're going to be able to keep these fields really nice and not have to use water that we're drawing out of the aquifer in order to, in order to irrigate them. That's another reason why you try to put it all together because of how much infrastructure it takes just to be able to do that. So.
Um, Michael, just to answer, uh, your question from earlier about whether or not the task force has engaged the school district. It has, uh, staff has had meetings with the school district and school administrators, uh, to gauge their interest, level of interest in participation in the creation of this facility and the use as well. And then additionally, you mentioned the county. Um, just as a reminder, Commissioner Cohen is on this task force and she's in her role on the task force, signed off on this to be brought forward to council. So, um, you know, and she is appointed by the commissioner's court to represent, uh, the county, uh, in this project. So.
And then, and then the one thing to add is that we have been in, and I know the council knows this, but without being able to go into too much disclosure, but we have had multiple meetings with Texas State who has expressed a preliminary interest in having a conversation with us, in particular on the indoor space to bring certain, uh, elements of their, uh, their, their sports teams, uh, to help, uh, be a part of this. And there's a revenue share, there's an economic development opportunity, but we can't, can't get there if we, if we can't lead in the community and show them that this plan can work. Uh, they, they're downright excited was, would be the, the commentary that I would say. Now it's preliminary, not a commitment at all, but you know.
And there's been other colleges that have shown.
There have been.
So it's been great, but one of the things I want to say is that, uh, y'all, y'all both said something that really hit, uh, the nail on the head was what's the goal of this? The investment in our kids. And that's really what we want to do is invest in our kids. This is a plan. Can, can the entire plan conversion maybe one day? But at the end of the day, it's about the voters. The voters will decide when we go to bond, we're going to have more public engagement. We're going to have more public input. We're going to allow, we're going to make sure that we bring in the language that's going to allow them to know what they're voting on. So it's going to be really important to make sure we're transparent and clear on everything we're doing. But at the end of the day, it's going to be the parents, it's going to be those parents from the schools that when I'm at events, reach out to me and say, Kyle needs to do better. They need to do more. I hear that at all the events I go to.
We've all been reached out.
It's, it's important. So I, I want to make sure we're clear on what we're doing. We're investing in the kids and mayor with that, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adopt the sportsplex master plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Rizzo, second by Mayor Pro Tim, that we approve agenda item 25. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Just want to say, uh, yeah, I mean, we all want this. Uh, we all want what's best for Kyle. It's just important to kind of, you know, keep level with the emotion because we have the, we really have to understand the finances of this. Um, and if we can get there, then we'll get there. But, you know, we're going to, we're going to get there doing it the right way, you know, with the right projects, with the right partners, with the right, um, you know, municipalities that are, you know, so that we can provide value for, for our community. And, you know, we want to, uh, provide that value at all the parks, not, not just, not just at this one project, you know, if, if, if that is, you know, passed, but ultimately, you know, it will be the voters, um, who decide. But, you know, just leaving the emotion out of it.
Councilor Kenny.
I was just going to say the youth of Kyle deserve this. It's, uh, it's a worthwhile investment.
And if I may, while we're still in discussion, the, the other component, uh, in addition to the adoption would be, um, feedback on if we want to pursue, come back later with a design contract for this eastern portion of the sportsplex site and then start the due diligence study on what we need in terms of an indoor recreation center.
That what, the eastern portion?
Oh, western portion, I'm sorry.
Yes, for one A. Is that the, you said the one A Cromwell portion?
Yes.
That would be, yeah, I think we're all getting a little tired here on what direction. But, um, yes, that's the idea is for one A, we would recommend bringing you back a design contract for that. So we could get started with that, in particular on Cromwell. We, we think we need to get moving very quickly on that. It will take some time to put that road in.
All right. Just, just. Councilor Harris.
So are we, is the motion to accept this, um, lesser used model? I mean, we have two, we have two models of the sportsplex.
No, no, right now it's the motions to adopt the sportsplex master plan.
She's saying, she's saying which concept?
As shown here.
The one we're seeing here.
The two concepts were just how we arrived at this, but it's this master plan that's in front of you.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I don't think we need to necessarily direct you, but I would like, or do you want to be directed to bring back the, uh, contract or to, for one A and the other two pieces?
Yeah, I think that's the direction that we've heard from the council. So we'll bring it back. Yes, sir. That's, that's the plan.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item 26. Consider approval. Well, let's look at what, let's, what time is it? It's 11:20. Let's think about this. We have, um, wait, Melissa?
29.
Yep, uh, 29, and we need to do the charter amendment. Uh, that, that one is important as well.
Mayor, I, I was going to suggest on the charter amendment, we could, we were looking at scheduling a meeting for next week for closed session. We could add this as one special item to, to talk about next week or on the 26. I know it's getting late, so.
Okay.
That could, that could be a longer item.
I'm not taking my item if we, if that's something.
So 28 goes to the next Thursday's?
Yes, sir. That.
Special meeting? Okay.
Yes, 28.
We'll put 30 on that as well. We can add that. It's a limited conversation. Um, historical archives, the, what is 27?
27.
We're telecommunications.
I mean, we have a representative Diamond Communications who'd be here all, all evening.
We're approving those leases.
This is for the, the cell phone leases. Yes, yes, sir. We need to do that.
Sorry. Somebody did you wrong putting you on 27. I'm sorry. Yeah. I, I don't, I don't know who it would be, but one of these guys. All right. Agenda item 27. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing agreements with Diamond Towers v. LLC. We're going to, we're going to, you're going to, we're so thankful, uh, for the construction of wireless telecommunications tower on city-owned properties located on 1626 Water Tank Property, Daisy Lane Water Tank Property and Kyle Wastewater Treatment Plant. Sorry, it's a big city. We have a lot we're dealing with, but this one is super important. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This one is, uh, super important. We're excited to really kind of bring back the culmination of, of some of the efforts that we've had regarding really looking at some city sites and then partnering with, um, a potential new, um, tower locations that we could have and, and working out with a lease. So if you remember, uh, really this kind of started, uh, May of, of last year, really kind of talking about our, our cell coverage service and, and how we have, um, some areas that are, are not as, um, robust. And so this was kind of our current cell tower gaps. And again, um, red and yellow and orange are, are not that great. Uh, so we really went out, uh, for an RFP in November of last year and awarded it in January of, of this year to really get a partner, uh, to help us out with these, um, locations of wireless, uh, telecommunications facilities. So, uh, with that, um, Diamond Towers is that partner that we have and they have reached out to their, um, cell tower, um, users. And really we're looking at three sites to build new towers adjacent to, uh, these locations. Uh, one is a 1626 Water Tank Property, uh, building a new tower at that location, um, building a tower adjacent to the Daisy Lane Water Tank Property over there. And, uh, the third, uh, tower location that they, uh, don't have a user yet, but have a lot of interest in that area is, uh, the wastewater treatment plant, um, location. So with these three towers coming online, it would be, uh, it would, it would affect 58,000, uh, population, uh, just kind of right around these towers that these would be, uh, served. They already have some future sites that they're reaching out with us on, uh, but these three sites are the ones that really are, are looking at, um, getting your approval, uh, for tonight. And again, they would be looking at bringing, uh, the Daisy Lane and the 1626 Water Tank, uh, property on next year and then, um, the treatment plant after. So kind of on the phasing on those, on those schedules for that.
Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. It's been long overdue. Our residents have been asking for this for a long time for the additional towers. We have poor cell reception in certain parts of the city and it's on both sides, east side, west side. Uh, there's areas where you don't have any. I remember one day being, uh, near the Walmart and I ordered a pizza and the pizza took a long time to make and my wife couldn't get a hold of me and she was like, what happened to him? She got worried, right? So it's, it's just really bad reception. Spotty, uh, you don't have Wi-Fi everywhere. Unless there's Wi-Fi, you're in trouble. So, uh, um, it's, it's something that's long overdue. So I just want to say thank you. And with that, uh, we could have some discussion, but I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 27 and thank you on behalf of the residents.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilor Rizzo, second by Councilmember Kenny, that we approve agenda item 27. Just want to, I, I would really like for us to have some PR around this. It's a, it's just super helpful. So, all right. Any further discussion?
Yeah. I'll, I'll get her some stuff for the weekly report.
Here's lean back. All right. All.
I see the chair back.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you again. Yes. Very, very sorry.
Yeah, we have to do 26. Sorry.
All right. Agenda item 26. Consider approval of a resolution establishing the, the date for a public hearing to be held on August 19th, 2025 is required under chapter 395 of Texas Local Government Code to consider, discuss and review the update to the water and wastewater land use assumptions, water and wastewater capital improvements plan, and imposition of updated water and wastewater impact fee amounts.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item, there's no formal action besides just setting this public hearing date. So with that, we have worked with, uh, Impact Fee Advisory Committee. Uh, they, um, met and looked at our impact fees and the state law requires to set up a public hearing up for 30 days. And, uh, we're looking at August 19th being that public hearing date. So officially, um, this resolution would set that date for that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, motion approve?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mayor, seconded by, uh, Councilor Harris, that we approve agenda item 26. Is there a discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. And we'll do, we'll do 29 and then we'll, uh, we have a brief exec and then, and we'll be done. We'll go quick. Receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff feedback regarding the creation of a city entity for historical archives. Ms. Scott, sorry for the, being so late.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, and Council. Um, I'm here this evening, Wednesday, Scott, I'm your director. We'll talk about the creation of a city entity.
For historical archives. So on March 18th, uh, City Council tasked the staff with conducting a study and making recommendations regarding the establishment of a Kyle Historical Archive Board. Staff identified options for forming a city-sponsored organization and outlined for potential key initiatives. The city does not have a city-sponsored organization nor department tasked with focus on preservation and archiving the history of Kyle. It's common for cities to have oversight bodies on this subject. For instance, Buta has the Historical Preservation Committee. They look at, um, buildings and, uh, sites. San Marcos has the Heritage Association, uh, another nonprofit organization. Council key suggested initiatives regarding the historical items included to organize, preserve, research, digitize, publish, display, promote, educate, and celebrate. I thought it was interesting to include the mission of the Texas State Historical Association, which is to foster the appreciation, understanding, and teaching of the rich and unique history of Texas. And by example and through programs and activities, encourage and promote research, preservation, and publication of historical materials affecting the state of Texas. If we go back one and all you did was change Kyle, our mission is sort of there already. I did a great deal of research on this and I just included a few. It's what, it's what libraries do. We, uh, we research. So everything from organizations, museums, archival institutions. I read, uh, journal articles, books. I talked to actual consultants. I talked to the director of the Irving Museum. I visited the Museum and Visitor Center of Bastrop and also the San Marcos, uh, San Marcos Archives Collection as well. So when I talked to the Texas Historical Commission, their feedback when considering archival work is all of this as a starting point. There's a great deal there, everything mission, funding, priorities, the public access, preservation, equipment, standards, display, personnel. It's a lot to think about. They recommend hiring a professional consultant and why would you hire a consultant to conduct a feasibility study? Expertise in planning and development would include operations, design, and collection management. Strategic planning and vision development includes the mission, vision, goals, timelines, and milestones. Legal and ethical guidance, policy, legal responsibilities and compliance. There are laws protecting, uh, artifacts. Funding, that includes the budget, grants, and fundraising opportunities. Project management, contractors, personnel, and assembling a team of experts. Community engagement, those are our stakeholder outreach, program development. Community engagement, those are our stakeholder outreach, program development, and marketing, and then evaluation and metrics determining the success in the future. A consultant can take an idea and transform it into a well-executed, sustainable institution. They can save time, money, and errors while maximizing potential success. So at this time, um, some direction from all of you as far as to proceed with obtaining archive and museum consultant quotes, to give time and attention to this project, continue research options, or something else. When I did consult, uh, speak to a couple of consultants, you're talking about a price of between 40,000 and 140,000. Um, the Irving City Consultant Plan, the feasibility is robust and, and all encompassing, it's on the closer to side to 100,000.
What do y'all think?
Well, my history buff, and I love our history, I love Kyle history, I, I, I want to do all we can to preserve it, and I think, um, might be a good investment, uh, I, we might want to set a parameter on how much we spend, but, uh, I think it'd be great.
The, the quotes, could we get a variety of quotes that have a different scope?
We should.
Okay.
So we go with option two then?
Well, the option one is to obtain quotes. So it's not, it's, right, it's late, it's not a commitment, but it, it definitely takes us to the next step.
So the consultant will basically just review a lot of our history and, and just do ancestry.
What the consultant, the consultant would tell us, here's where we start, and we could look at our vision, our mission, facility, opportunities, and then look at what materials do we need as far as digitizing and preservation, and what type of, uh, uh, staff member do we hire to do that work? But they will give us the knowledge of where we start and a path of where we go, and it doesn't have to be that end to start with, it can be here's our foundation to start, a guide, if you will, a guiding light, post.
I, I will say that Leslie and I had several conversations, or we had, we had a lengthy conversation, and your, your, uh, commentary about the, the staff and the, you know, the funding of this, uh, really resonated with me, because that wasn't something I was initially considering, but when you went into the details and the importance of making sure that, uh, that we are archiving in a proper, uh, fashion, um, it really was persuasive. So I think that basically if we have the mindset that in order to uncover our, and preserve our history, we're going to have to make some investments, then this process, you know, makes, makes sense, but if we want to say, you know, we just want to have kind of a volunteer group that's going to kind of do some stuff, then, and, which is better than we, than nothing, so it's not, that's, which is really where I was initially thinking, um, but the, the, the ability to have someone, you know, to, to do it right, that's the, that's the way. If we want to truly preserve and accomplish all of those things, we're going to need a really great advisory board with knowledge, we're going to need someone that, that is working on this, and I think there's years worth of work, uh, and we're going to need a direction to make sure that we're, uh, we're going in the right order, which is a, um, you know, which is what this item is, so.
My opinion is you're breaking down the entire town, city into different categories, from the beginning, early times of our economics, the original business owners, to the family, to the culture, to where the history lies as far as the founders and their families and their, um, their contributions to the state, maybe the country. So you'd have to do some really, really, uh, searching on that to where, you know, it could go national one day, this is the city of Kyle, you know?
Absolutely, and so I think having that expert opinion and guide is where that's important, because you have very different ideas of what is historically valuable and what may not be, and maybe we're not following the right path with ultimately destroying items that are valuable to the history and the preservation, but you do need experts to know how to do that.
Or have, have we done any, uh, analysis on the, uh, retentions policy, or is that something that would be included in this?
It would, it would be included in that, and then how to approach that, I know there's 1,500 boxes in storage, does that sound about right?
That's about it.
And I know the library has about 25 that are in Safe Side as well, and we just keep uncovering, and the other aspect of this is that, um, people love their history, they love their family history, and they love to donate that, and that would also be part of this, is what is acceptable to take on and what isn't.
So, I know initially we were talking about this being a volunteer thing, but I feel like the, the history of Kyle is worth investing in, and if we're going to do it, we should do it right, so, uh, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to proceed with obtaining consultant quotes.
All right, motion by Councilmember Kenny, seconded by Councilmember Harris, that we direct staff to proceed with obtaining the quotes, is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, it's getting late, so I'm kind of, uh, fogging in and out, but I, I thought we were going to create a committee already on, we had talked to several people about being on this committee, what, what happened with that? Because I kind of feel like now the committee thing's going away, or what?
That's a good question.
I'm just, and who's going to be in charge of this? Uh, is it, is it going to be the librarian, is it going to be a committee, is it going to be this consulting group? What, I mean, um, I kind of feel like we want to do this, and we want to do this, but I don't know who's, how we're going to do this, is, I guess this is, I'm kind of worried, is a consultant going to bring us to that point where we decide who's in charge of this? Who's, who's gonna, what do you call it, decide, uh, what's history, what's not, is, are we going to bring somebody outside to decide what history or not? Or do we want someone inside that's going to decide what's history or not? I mean, I'm, we're kind of, we've kind of been jumping around, and I know, because this is brand new, we're trying to create something, I'm just kind of worried about jumping around.
I think that's why we need a consultant.
Yeah, that's why you need the consultant.
Lead us that way.
Yeah, the consultant is not supposed to do the, the project, the consultant is supposed to help us answer all of those questions.
Get the roadmap to do this.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, because I know we started off as a committee, and we all voted on a committee, and, uh, we started talking about doing the committee, and now we're jumping back to the consultant, feels like we're going back to zero when we.
But doesn't mean you can't keep the committee.
Exactly.
Okay.
The consultant can help the committee move forward, like the Sportsplex has, had a consultant that went out and created a framework.
Yeah, and, and I'm getting that, I'm just, I just kind of thought we were a little further, because we had already created a committee, I thought they were already going through boxes, I thought things were already being done, so.
But, but we need to.
That's what I wanted to know, I want to get more information, I just wanted to know that, um, yeah, you know, Kyle's history's important to me, I want to make sure that not only do we get local input, we're, because, you know, something I worry about is bringing somebody outside and them deeming something that's not history importance, right? So, it's kind of what I was looking.
Yeah, I think we really, having the consultant will be a benefit. Um, I know when the county decided to look at the historical records and do a really good archive, they discovered that there was kind of like us, it's not there, but there's paper everywhere, and they trained, um, the recommendation was that they train their staff, and they took most of their staff up to Fort Worth to be trained. It is an art, our historical archives are an art, and preserving paper is an art, I think having a consultant to guide us through the initial stages of this.
I guess my concern, because 1,500 boxes, it's going to be a big task, and I'm like, are we taking our librarian and putting her on this task and taking her word for her duties?
Yeah, no.
Okay, that's what's kind of scaring me, I'm just, I was like, wow, uh, you're going to have to hire a second librarian, but yeah, just, uh, I don't know.
I promised Leslie no, she's looking at me, but, but it's just more complex than we, I think initially thought, and we wanted to make sure we do this right comprehensively, and so I think that's, that's the recommendation.
Yeah, sounds good, I just didn't want to overwhelm you with a bunch of work on top of your work.
No, and honestly, that, that is for a specialist, my background in library, my masters is not in archival work, so it is very much a specialty.
Great, okay, no, I'm good.
All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero, we're going to go into a very brief, uh, executive session to review an item, and then we will come out and, um, um, finish our meeting. So the City Council will now go into executive session to discuss Agenda Items, uh, 31M pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074.
We still have Tracy.
All right, uh, it's 11:42, I'm going to call this meeting back to order, there was no action taken during executive session, there will be action taken now, uh, this is also an item we discussed yesterday during executive session, uh, the state law is changed, uh, at the last legislative session, that, uh, limits severance for, um, uh, uh, city officials in an employment contract, uh, we were already engaged, uh, with our city manager and city attorney, and have executed a contract prior to that, uh, that, uh, contemplated a one-year severance and under certain, uh, condition, meaning if there was a, uh, uh, termination without cause, uh, that's very common in city manager contracts, there's been a one-year, uh, basically severance provision in the con, city manager's contract for as long as I've been mayor, and so, uh, the belief, uh, has been that, uh, because it was grandfathered in, that, 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 that the contract would hold, but because, uh, we did, the way our contracts are written, if there's a change in compensation, even as much as, uh, a nominal raise, uh, that's commensurate with everyone else, that there might be a chance for that provision to be challenged, uh, that is not something that, um, that I think that the City Council wants to have hanging over, uh, city manager as a potential, uh, loss in what we've already agreed to in his contract, and so the proposal to amend the contract, uh, that's before us tonight, will essentially, uh, replace, reduce the amount of, uh, straight severance, uh, to be compliant with state law, but will replace, uh, that lost amount with a vacation policy, that, uh, this is not an increase in any way in benefits, but is rather, these are proposed, this is a proposed amendment that will keep the city manager and city attorney whole based on the agreements that we have already signed. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that, uh, as the way I've outlined it? All right, I, I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute amendments to the city's contract with the city manager and the city attorney to amend the severance provisions based on the changes to state law effective September 1, and to make other amendments to keep the employees whole, with such amendments in final form reviewed and approved by a contract attorney on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Our motion carries six to zero, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.